Okay. It is six o'clock. Oops, let me hang on. It's six o'clock and I'm going to call this Select Board work session for January 3rd, 2022 to order. Would you all please join me in the pledge?
Aye. For the reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, equal and liberty and justice for all.
With that, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, discuss the strategy with respect to litigation regarding 24 through 32nd Lane, and review the executive session minute -- meeting minutes for November 29th, 2021, in return to open session.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote. Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Six eighteen PM and we're going to resume the regular session for the Select Board. And just as a note, in addition to Town Manager Cohen, we have Finance Director John Souza and Town Accountant Darlene Lucy are joining us for this meeting. Just as background, the spreadsheet that's in the package was just a draft that John and Darlene and Paul worked on to give us a vehicle and a tool for going through and prioritizing. There's been no discussion or decisions by the Board or this collective body on any of it, so this is the first time we're meeting together to go through that. But what they tried to do is just lay out a framework so that we could tally as we make some decisions as to what we want to fund, what we want to defer, or not fund or take off the table.
So what's listed down as funded has not been funded?
Nothing has been funded yet except what was already voted on before our December meeting.
Okay, it was kind of confusing to see that listed in there.
Yeah.
Well, the previous commitments are funded, right?
Well, yeah.
What they're talking about is the column says funded and deferred, as if there were decisions made, and there have been no -- that's correct, right?
Yeah, I can just have them clear the column.
Yeah, so the decision -- well, it's just a -- it's a --
Just hide it.
Just don't call it funded.
Call it --
Suggested or something.
Yeah. Title it something else, just not funded.
What do you want to title it? Bring your mic down.
Priority? I don't know, do you want to call it priority or suggested or recommended? I mean, I didn't make the spreadsheet, I don't know, so I don't know what the --
Right, recommended is fine. And so unless the Board wants to take this a different way, my thought was to first hear from people who have something new that we haven't heard yet. And then perhaps we could go through the spreadsheet and just talk about the rationale and why things are where they are, where we want to put things. Does that work?
I think so.
Okay. So I'm going to start with what's in the packet in terms of what's new, and then if there's anybody else who has anything new that they want to offer, we'll go to the Zoom room and this room. Or if anyone wasn't able to speak last time, you're welcome to speak now. So the first one in the packet I have is from Philip Eliopoulos on behalf of Peter and Sarah Morin. Do we have anybody? Would you guys like to come to the podium to present what you're looking for? And I'll -- just as a reminder, I need your name and address if you're going to speak.
Sure. Peter Morin from 241 Old Westford Road.
Sarah Morin from 241 Old Westford Road.
I guess my -- thank you for listening to us tonight. I guess my first question is, Philip already submitted a letter. How much of that do you want me to get into to kind of summarize, or?
Just a top-level summary would be fine.
Okay. My wife and I are in the process of trying to purchase the shack on 272 Old Westford Road. It's a property that's changed hands several times in the last 10 years or so. We've watched it change hands and not succeed, and we're trying to create a business where it will be a profitable and successful business and for the town of Chelmsford. As we've gone through this, we realize our plan is to turn it into an ice cream stand as well as the continued coffee service. Part of that is the town requires triple base sink with an interior and exterior grease trap, which was more than what we thought when we started this process. It's around a $28,000 job, starting there and possibly going up, and it's just more than we can take on to complete the project. So we were asking for help from the Opera Funding to help fund that. The other piece to that is we've watched this business, the Shack Coffee Shop was doing okay until COVID hit. It's a very small building, as you know, 480 square feet. They weren't allowed to, you know, have people in there that can properly social distance, so they had to close down for a considerable amount of time, which makes us a little nervous as we go forward with different variants and upticks. So we're looking to convert this to a window service, like a traditional ice cream stand like Sullivan's or Kimball's, whatever you're used to, which is going to take another considerable amount of money. And we were hoping to get some help with that as well, so that we can make it a viable business that is, you know, doing walk-up service only. The rest of the details are in the letter. I don't know if you want me to share more there?
Any questions from the Board? I just had a question about the letter, somewhere in it, Philip's letter, says that the Board of Health is inflexible on the outdoor grease trap.
We had a meeting with --
Have you had a hearing with the Board of Health?
So, yeah, we did have kind of an all-hands meeting. We met with Paul and the department heads. Sue Rosa was there. Philip, our lawyer, was there. We tried to see if there was any avenue to pursue regarding variance. And it was a very hard line no, that there's no grounds for variance. There was only one ever issued in town, and there was very specific reasons around that, and it was not something that was pursuable.
So my question -- Paul, my question is, they haven't taken this before the elected Board of Health, and is that just not a path?
I spoke to Health Director Sue Rosa this afternoon about this issue, again knowing it would likely come up at tonight's meeting. She again reiterated that it's a regulation of the Board of Health and did not see any act of intervention forthcoming by the Board of Health. So certainly they're welcome to request a hearing before the Board of Health, but I just -- she doesn't see this as a means to address this problem.
What's the criteria for an outside grease trap?
It's in the Board of Health regulations. I don't -- I can't cite them verbatim, but --
She told us that was any food establishment is required to have an outdoor grease trap. You know, quite frankly, if we do have to put one of these in, it only helps the viability of the business, right, in case we do have to shift and change our offering, or if we aren't successful and we have to move on to another person, then they won't be going through the same rigmarole. And we know that the town's invested quite a bit of money in Friendship Park and Robertsfield, and we just think this would be a very complimentary business that could serve all those people going there.
Any questions? Go ahead, George.
I don't know if -- I don't know the regulations, but I was told that if, as long as no customers enter the premises and don't enter the premises, and that they use the bathroom, et cetera.
This isn't related to the bathroom. This is related to the preparation of food product.
I understand, but they would be no grease trap. I don't know why the bathroom -- but this was told by somebody who I think knows a little bit about the law, but again, I'm just bringing it up so it's okay to somebody else.
Again, it wasn't related to the bathroom usage or the inside or outside. It's related to the fact that technically it's a processing of the food, this custard that's being prepared, and because of that processing, it's considered a food product.
And the food is the ice cream machine?
Yeah, it's like a -- yes, basically.
That's their basic machine.
Basically, the only reason you were here for money was because of the cost of the grease trap?
The cost of the grease trap and the cost of making this --
A little bit more, yeah, I know, a little bit more, but I mean, the basic, the major part of it was the grease trap, right?
Right, so you're asking for the $28,000 for the -- it's just for the outdoor grease trap, or is it for both?
The $28,000 is the scope of the plumbing project that includes a triple base -- it's all part of the requirement. Triple base sink, an interior grease trap, as well as a secondary exterior grease trap. That is what's required.
And then you're asking for the 11.2 to set up the business so that you can just have people stay outside and come to the --
Correct.
Okay. So should we add --
You're joining us for this meeting. Just as background, the spreadsheet that's in the package was just a draft that John and Darlene and Paul worked on to give us a vehicle and a tool for going through and prioritizing. There's been no discussion or decisions by the board or this collective body on any of it. So this is the first time we're meeting together to go through that. But what they tried to do is just lay out a framework so that we could tally as we make some decisions as to what we want to fund, what we want to defer, or not fund or take off the table.
So what's listed down to funded has not been funded?
Nothing has been funded yet except what was already voted on before our December meeting.
Okay, it was kind of confusing to see that listed in there.
Well, the previous commitments are funded, right?
Well, yeah.
What they're talking about is the column says funded and deferred is if there were decisions made and there have been no -- that's correct, right?
Yeah, I can just have them clear the column.
Yeah, so the decision, well, it's just a, it's a
Just hide it.
Just don't call it funded.
Call it suggested or something.
Yeah. Title it something else, just not funded.
What do you want to title it? Bring your mic down.
Priority? I don't know, do you want to call it priority or suggested or recommended? I mean, I didn't make the spreadsheet, I don't know, so I don't know what the
Right, recommended is fine. And so unless the board wants to take this a different way, my thought was to first hear from people who have something new that we haven't heard yet. And then perhaps we could go through this spreadsheet and just talk about the rationale and why things are where they are or where we want to put things. Does that work?
I think so.
Okay, so I'm going to start with what's in the packet in terms of what's new, and then if there's anybody else who has anything new that they want to offer, we'll go to the Zoom room and this room. Or if anyone wasn't able to speak last time, you're welcome to speak now. So the first one in the packet I have is from Philip Eliopoulos on behalf of Peter and Sarah Morin. Do we have anybody? Would you guys like to come to the podium to present what you're looking for? And I'll, just as a reminder, I need your name and address if you're going to speak.
Sure. Peter Morin from 241 Old Westford Road.
Sarah Morin from 241 Old Westford Road.
I guess my, thank you for listening to us tonight. I guess my first question is, Philip already submitted a letter. How much of that do you want me to get into to kind of summarize or?
Just a top-level summary would be fine.
Okay. My wife and I are in the process of trying to purchase the Shack on 272 Old Westford Road. It's a property that's changed hands several times in the last 10 years or so. We've watched it change hands and not succeed, and we're trying to create a business where it will be a profitable and successful business and for the town of Chelmsford. As we've gone through this, we realize our plan is to turn it into an ice cream stand as well as the continued coffee service. Part of that is the town requires triple base sink with an interior and exterior grease trap, which was more than what we thought when we started this process. It's around a $28,000 job starting there and possibly going up, and it's just more than we can take on to complete the project. So we were asking for help from the Opera Funding to help fund that. The other piece to that is we've watched this business, the Shack Coffee Shop was doing okay until COVID hit. It's a very small building, as you know, 480 square feet. They weren't allowed to, you know, have people in there that can properly social distance, so they had to close down for a considerable amount of time, which makes us a little nervous as we go forward with different variants and upticks. So we're looking to convert this to a window service like a traditional ice cream stand like Sullivan's or Kimball's or whatever you're used to, which is going to take another considerable amount of money. And we were hoping to get some help with that as well so that we can make it a viable business that is, you know, doing walk-up service only. The rest of the details are in the letter. I don't know if you want me to share more there.
Any questions from the board? I just had a question about the letter, somewhere in it, Philip's letter, says that the Board of Health is inflexible on the outdoor grease trap. So have you had a hearing with the Board of Health?
So, yeah, we did have kind of an all-hands meeting. We met with Paul and the department heads. Sue Rosa was there. Philip, our lawyer, was there. We tried to see if there was any avenue to pursue regarding variants. And there was a very hard line no, that there's no grounds for variants. There was only one ever issued in town, and there was very specific reasons around that, and that was not something that was pursuable.
So my question, Paul, my question is, they haven't taken this before the elected Board of Health? And is that just not a path?
I spoke to, I spoke to Health Director Sue Rosa this afternoon about this issue, again, knowing it would likely come up at tonight's meeting. She again reiterated that it's a regulation of the Board of Health and did not, and did not see any act, any active intervention forthcoming by the Board of Health. So certainly they're welcome to request a hearing before the Board of Health, but I just, she doesn't see this as a means to address this problem.
What's the criteria for an outside grease trap?
It's in the Board of Health regulations. I don't, I can't cite them verbatim.
She told us it was any food establishment is required to have an outdoor grease trap. You know, quite frankly, if we do have to put one of these in, it only helps the viability of the business, right? In case we do have to shift and change our offering or if we aren't successful and we have to move on to another person, then they won't be going through the same rigmarole. And we know that the town's invested quite a bit of money in Friendship Park and Robertsfield, and we just think this would be a very complimentary business that could serve all those people going there.
Go ahead, George.
I don't know if, I don't know the regulations, but I was told that if, as long as no customers enter the premises and don't enter the premises and that it's to use the bathroom, et cetera.
This isn't related to the bathroom. This is related to the preparation of food product.
I understand, but that they would, there would be no grease trap. I don't know why the bathroom, but this was told by somebody who I think knows a little bit about the law, but again, I'm just bringing it up so it's okay to somebody else.
Again, it wasn't related to the bathroom usage or the inside or outside. It's related to the fact that technically it's a processing of the food, this custard that's being prepared, and because of that processing, it's considered a food product.
And the food is ice, the ice cream machine?
Yeah, it's like a, yes, basically.
It's also a basic machine.
Basically, the only reason you were here for money was because of the cost of the grease trap?
Cost of the grease trap and the cost of making this
A little bit more, yeah, I know, a little bit more, but I mean, the basic, the major part of it was the grease trap, right?
Right, so that you're asking for the 28,000 for the, it's just for the outdoor grease trap, or is it for both?
The 28,000 is the scope of the plumbing project that includes a triple base, it's all part of the requirement. Triple base sink, an interior grease trap, as well as a secondary exterior grease trap. That is what's required.
And then you're asking for the 11.2 to set up the business so that you can just have people stay outside and come to the
Correct.
Okay. So should we add that as a line to the spreadsheet for when we come back and discuss this?
I think so.
Can you make it two lines? Because I don't think we should have, I'd rather see it as the construction is one line and the grease trap is a secondary line.
That's fine. Any other questions or comments on this while John does that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the next new one I have from the packet is Chief Spiny.
Yes, good evening.
Go ahead.
Members, you can hear me, members of the board?
Yep.
Are you referring to the withdrawal letter for the clinician?
Yes.
Yeah, basically, I took some serious consideration on this. I know there's very limited funding. I know there are a lot of other town departments looking for the potential of additional personnel. I know there are some serious concerns with bringing on additional personnel on the town's budget. So with that in mind, I had a lengthy discussion with the frontline director. I looked at our resources with the frontline clinician program, did a little bit of a forecasting with, I think, our community's needs, and I've reached the conclusion that I think our frontline clinician program as it stands today will provide adequate resources, at least for several cycles. I mean, that being said, I do ultimately believe there will come a time where this community, like probably most communities, will need more of a full-time presence in mental health issues embedded with police officers. But a lot of town departments don't have access to a co-op program like the police department does, so taking all that into consideration, that's why I forwarded you the withdrawal letter.
So Chief, you are seeking the 27,000 per year for three years for the frontline initiative?
Yes, so, yeah, it's brand new to this year. The grant funding has basically dried up. So as a result of that, the frontline initiative advised all five communities that each community is responsible for $27,000 to keep the frontline initiative fully funded with the clinicians and staff that are currently in place. So rather than, you know, adding that to my general budget, I'd request that that $27,000 be paid for over the next three years.
How is it paid now? Is it, it's budgeted now?
No.
No, we have been, we have been running off of a grant. The frontline initiative has been receiving grants over a number of years from Greater Lowell Health Alliance and other grants that has been able to fund the entire program up until this year. So that, those monies are now gone.
Okay. Any questions? All right, so you make that modification for the request? And the next one I have in the packet is the McKay Branch Amendment. Is there anyone here who, come on up, Becky?
Number 37.
I'm Becky Herman. I'm actually from Concord, New Hampshire. And I wanted to thank you for letting us come and update you on our request that we had made. Since we last came to present, David Braslow, this is David Braslow, he's not only a trustee but also an HVAC engineer, so very convenient. So David and I met with Melissa Joyce, the Town Sustainability Manager, and with Paul, and that was just prior to Christmas, and we walked through the McKay Building, and we brainstormed about how to reduce the cost of the HVAC project while making sure that we really could maintain adequate library services, which was really a priority for the trustees. Paul encouraged us to think about holding some of the larger programs at some of the nearby town facilities like the North Chelmsford Community Center and at the Senior Center, which we've done before in the past. And that really just allowed us to sort of think more creatively about what we could do with the building. And so then we met with Jess, who was the engineer from CTM, I guess is what it, and we talked about what we could do. And by actually not using the second floor as a public space, which has some problems to begin with because it's not ADA accessible and it's also sort of a security risk because of the way that you enter the building, we decided that we could actually reduce the scope of the HVAC project, and it would enable us to still provide services for the 10 to 12 people that come, you know, every 15 minutes at the library branch, but also accommodate some of the smaller programs that we do anyways, and then we would do the larger programs off-site. But David, do you want to talk about what is actually entailed in the scale-back of the HVAC?
Yeah, so David Braslow, 99 High Street. As Becky said, the revised plan vastly simplifies the project. I think the overall cost is reduced from 441,000 to about $150,000, which is tremendous by revising the way that the work is done so that the bulk of the work can be done in the basement of the building. It avoids a bunch of ancillary construction that was in the original plan that the engineer came up with that included relocating lighting fixtures, moving and then moving back, library materials, dropping the ceiling, and a whole bunch of ductwork. The project becomes much simpler and much more effective financially, yet still allows us to meet the occupancy requirements for the spaces on the first floor. So it seems like a really good solution, only with the added slight inconvenience that larger programs would be moved a block and a half away to the, to the north.
And right now, the majority of the circulation for the library materials really is centered on the first floor. It's where we have most of our popular materials and children's materials. It's the new books that go out the most, and so it sort of recasts the library as a popular materials browsing space. I guess otherwise, I just wanted to say that the trustees at their last meeting, I mean, they did talk and about McKay and, you know, the desire to keep it open. And so it's, this just seems like a way that we could probably make that happen without it, you know, keeping in mind, like Chief Spiny said, that we have limits on the amount of funding that's available. And, you know, we just want it to be sort of, you know, good stewards of the money that was available. Any questions?
So I have a question, Paul, maybe you can answer it. You mentioned in the write-up here that many of the larger programs would be redirected to the community center or the senior center. How full up are they usually with their activities? I mean, will there be conflicts, I guess is the question?
Obviously, we would have to coordinate with that, but we're not going to just say hey. No, but we've been doing this regularly. I mean, like when, they were always our rain location for concerts and things like that, so we've always been able to coordinate. So, yeah, no, I mean, it's part of what we were talking about in general was that, you know, Chelmsford is a goal, we want to think of us as the whole community, and so that, you know, all the online programs have been available to everybody. But as we move into North Chelmsford and want to do more programming there, then we just want to make sure that it's a sort of a holistic view, and it's not just the library doing something, but it's the senior center and the community center and the senior residences and the pup-up library, and just making sure that we are coordinating it all at once.
Thanks.
When we looked at the type of programs that are held at McKay, a lot of the programs are smaller. So sizing the system for about 12 people is what the engineer was basing things on allows us to use standard HVAC equipment or consistent with the type of building. Trying to size a system for a 30-person program like he had originally designed required custom commercial equipment that was far more expensive. So this solution allows him to use off-the-shelf equipment.
Almost like for a residence, which is what McKay is.
Exactly. It's a house.
More, certainly more consistent with that. And that really helps bring the cost down.
And what was the new dollar amount again?
150.
We're requesting 150,000.
Yeah, it's $125,000 for the HVAC improvements and then about $25,000 for building modifications to secure the second floor so that it will be usable for storage only going forward.
Right.
And not open to the public.
Thank you.
You guys put out a survey on use of the library?
We have historically.
Do you have any preliminary results from that?
Obviously, two years have gone by that we don't have, you know, data because we haven't been open. But we have, so you're asking about how people use the library or?
There was a recent survey that went out about use of the McKay Library. I was just wondering if you had any preliminary results from that?
I think probably just talking about the Facebook.
It was sent to me as a town meeting rep.
Right, well, that was a question from Maggie, the, you know, one of the trustees, yeah. No, and it was actually just directed at that time to the town meeting reps that were represented in West Chelmsford. And so we did get feedback. We probably got about 20 responses from people that were just telling us, you know, how they had used it for the past 60 years and that their grandchildren are using it now and that they really hoped that we would stay open. And I'd be happy to share any of those emails and answers with you. I have a folder of them, and they sent some things to Paul, too.
Yeah, and we got a mix of responses largely indicating that people would definitely begin using the library again if it was available. A few people have made use of the main library in the interim, but most people have said, you know, like other services during this COVID period, they just stopped using the library until it becomes available again.
Well, and I think there's just because, you know, it has had an up and down history, just because when I first started 21 years ago, Bernie Lynch told me that, you know, we had to make a $200,000 cut, and we had to cut back the hours at that point, and then we were able to grow it back. And then in 2008, we had to cut back hours again because things were bad, and then it came back again. And so, you know, it's like the little engine that could. I mean, everyone just believes it's always going to get to come back because that's what we've made happen. And, you know, it's sort of a promise that we want to keep.
Is that a historical building?
It's over 100 years old.
By definition, it is, yeah. It's 125 years old.
Yeah, it was built in 1900. There's no file for it with Massachusetts Historical.
I'm just wondering.
But it is of that era.
Right.
I appreciate the work that went into getting the cost down and kind of re-bucketting it. I was just, like with each one of these, I'm asking myself, are there other sources of funding that could accomplish it? Like, is it eligible for CPC money or anything like that? Or is it eligible for anything because it's a historic building?
We'd have a hard time getting outside grants, meaning like from the state, Mass Historic.
Because it's not a historic legislature.
Because there's no unique historic aspect of it. You know, like other things, it could be eligible for funding under community preservation if there was a purpose for it.
We're open to that.
Anything else? Okay. I think that was all for new information in the packet. I don't know if you want to add to the spreadsheet, the, Paul, you emailed something out after the packet went out about the Weston and Sampson.
Yeah.
Over here, and also from the North Chelmsford Water Department.
Yeah, on number 48, which is a sewer infiltration investigation remediation, we received from our consulting engineers at Weston and Sampson the budget projections for those investigations remediation, and I shared that with the board by email, and Gary Persicetti and Steve Yonely are on the Zoom this evening. But the conservative projection that Weston Sampson provides is that that would be roughly 1.5 million per year, as opposed to what it now is displayed as 1.5 million dollar total.
So they've got, John, they've got 350K in fiscal '22.
Yep, to do the investigation, and then as you can see for '23.
And then '23, '24, '25, and '26 is 1.5 million a year.
So that totals up to roughly 6.1 million.
And then you also emailed something from the North Chelmsford.
Yeah, late this afternoon, an email came in from the North Chelmsford Water District that I forwarded to the board immediately upon receipt. They're, similar to the Chelmsford Water District, they're seeking a treatment plant for, to address PFAS, and their projected funding cost is 5,525,000 dollars.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Just one last note.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I don't see him on the call, that's why, sort of a transition, what you're doing. I did hear from Jose Negron, the building commissioner. He is withdrawing his request for a funding which was number?
39?
31.
31?
That's 39.
39. Sorry, 39, the building inspector residential. So that's withdrawn.
Did he give you a reason why?
He reevaluated again, similar to what Chief Spiny said at the last meeting, and he's now at full capacity and wants to see how things go now that he's finally at full staffing. And so he felt that this time it was best, you know, not to advance the request at this period. Thank you.
Which line item on here was Chief Spiny's original request?
47.
This was 37.
So is there anyone who has any new information or did not speak the last time that would like to speak? Frank Good in the Zoom room?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, just name and address, please.
Sure. Good evening, my name's Frank Good, resident for Longsborough Road. I'm also president of the Superior Officers Union. Madam Chair and the board, thank you for allowing me to speak at your meeting. And thank you for clarifying right out of the chute what this worksheet that was part of the agenda is and represents. I think we're all in agreement, very poorly constructed document. I think we all need to remember that this is a public record, right? So it needs to be accurate and it needs to reflect exactly what it is. I think a title probably would have been helpful. I was thinking something like new prioritized list or town's amended allocation request, anything, not worksheet. And then as we all discussed, as you discussed, to use the words funded, deferred, not funded, distinctive, definitive, past tense. Couple years from now, someone looks at this public record, nobody knows more than I do how important public records are. Someone looks at this public record and they're going to say, oh, it was funded, look at that. That wasn't funded, and those were deferred. So I think need to do a better job of ensuring that documents that are public records are accurate and reflect exactly what they are. Another question I have on that is, so you described, it's been described as a worksheet, some ideas to kind of give you some, where you wanted to go with this. Who decided which requests went into which columns?
Mr. Good, that's the purpose of this evening. This was a draft, as I said, that was put together. I personally asked for some type of Excel file that we could use as a board. Nobody from the board has weighed into any of this yet. It's a first-pass notional sheet that was put together, and the purpose of this evening's meeting is for us to go through it.
Okay, I do understand that, but somebody who created this document shows which columns certain things went into, and that was my question. This is a public record, I want, I'm interested in knowing who decided.
The initial pass was done, correct me if I'm wrong, was done with Paul and John Souza and Darlene Lucier.
Okay, so this
No one, no one has provided board input yet. I looked at the format before the meeting and said, this is a format I think will work, and that's all we did.
I do understand the format. This ultimately becomes what Mr. Cohen's requests are. He wants the money.
Frank, point taken. Do you have anything that you want to say in terms of the content of your requests?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, please.
But I have another question about how number 41 is depicted as premium pay. Pretty sure there was at least four or five other premium pay requests that were individually submitted, but somehow project number 41 was condensed to
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't gone through that yet.
Okay, okay.
I understand your point.
Okay, but every other request that was made has its own project number.
Correct.
Except for, except for those individual units who made premium pay requests. So just thought it seemed a little funny that that's how it was done. So just thought it seemed a little funny that that's how it was done. But anyways, I move on. I apologize for not appearing a person tonight, but unfortunately my schedule not allow for that and I'll just quickly get through my presentation. At this point, I hope that you and the members of the select board have read and made yourself familiar with my lengthy request I made on behalf of the Superior Officers Union for premium pay. Therefore, I won't reiterate tonight all the rationale I used in coming up with this request as you have already seen it. And it's already a part of the public record. As you know, I follow all of your meetings very closely and have some serious concerns with statements made by Mr. Cohen and how he handled our request that was forwarded to his office as well as requests from the other public safety units. From the very beginning discussions about Opera Funds, during the first couple of meetings, Mr. Cohen quickly glossed over the use of this money for premium pay to essential employees. It wasn't until requests were made and questions were asked that even acknowledged the use of these funds for premium pay for Chelmsford employees. Instead, it appeared as he had already created his own laundry list of uses, large and small, that he wanted to use the funds for. Early on, it appeared as always that he thought these funds, these were his funds and should be spent on only what he saw fit. Thank you for not allowing that to happen. Your attention and time and effort to this is true. We appreciate it.
Frank, Frank, I, I.
It certainly would have been much easier.
Mr. Good, do you have comments on your request?
I do.
Please, can you get to that, please?
Yep. The board decided that all groups and organizations, departments could make written requests for Opera Funds and you as a board would ultimately have the final decision on how these funds are allocated. It was at that time that Mr. Cohen offered to assist with those ideas.
Frank, Frank.
With all due respect, I'm a town resident and I'm speaking as a town resident. The fire department did a PowerPoint presentation and that's great. I have the points I need to get out, okay? It's, it's very simple.
Can we make the points without attacking the individuals at this table?
I'm not attacking. I'm stating the truth. I mean, I'm fact. I, I, so again, the question I requested, I gave, you had a formal meeting where proposals were put together and presented by Mr. Cohen and, and he unilaterally changed our proposals to a thousand dollars. That's not what our proposals were.
I don't think that that hap, I don't know that that happened.
Can I ask then, please?
Where do you, where do you see that we changed it to a thousand dollars?
I don't see.
He should just say what you said. Just make his point.
Frank, Frank, could you?
I just didn't know what Frank wants.
Could you please just state what you're asking for?
I am asking.
Is it changed from the written proposal that you asked, that you submitted?
Five thousand dollars per member. I was going to give some, you know, every other, everyone else who, who gave their thing got to speak. And I, you know, I, I, the rationale and whatnot, it's, it's.
I don't mind, we don't mind rationale, but we're, we're getting into personal attacks here and that's not the purpose of this meeting.
I mean, it, this, 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 there's, there's something to be read into here. Like, there's a reason why, I, I just can't understand why the town puts out project numbers one through fifty-five and it doesn't include requests that were made by public safety units.
And, and.
I will advocate.
So let me, let me just tell you something, okay? From my personal standpoint, when we first had these proposals brought to us on December sixth?
Beginning of December.
Yeah, sixth.
Okay. All of those things were individualized and yes, I realize that premium pay right now is one lump sum in line forty-one. And if you had come and sat here and looked at my notes, you would see that I made a note to say, when we review this, I would like to request that those be itemized. Okay, we just haven't gotten to the discussion yet, Frank. So, so what I, what, what the purpose of this is right now is to provide any, if you want to present what you requested because you weren't here in December, that's fine. Present what your request is. And then.
I wasn't, I wasn't able to attend on December sixth.
Right, so what is your, if you would like to say what your request is, which is the five thousand dollars per member.
And that's what it is, for the Superior Officers Union. And, and I believe they should all be addressed individually.
Fair enough.
Not lump sum as Mr. Cohen has put together. Again, I'll just say it one more time.
So we'll discuss that when we get to line forty-one. We'll discuss that when we get to line forty-one.
Thank you.
Thank you for the input. Is there anyone else who did not provide input in December or who has a change from what was presented in December?
Good evening, board members. My name's Andy Reed. I'm with the Chelmsford Water District. I'm the superintendent. Madam Chair, you mentioned something about, you know, getting some feedback on, you know, requests that we had. So what I wanted to do is give just a few minutes of, of that. So the Chelmsford Water District, as well as the North Chelmsford Water District have made a request for funding for mainly a water treatment plant for PFAS issues that we're dealing with. And what I would like to put forward just for consideration, when we first started this process and Paul was kind enough to invite us to present, what we presented were the capital costs for the project. And now that you mentioned something that I thought was very important was, you know, with a bunch of funding mechanisms are coming about. So what the districts potentially could use, and this may help narrow down because there's been a lot of requests and we're listening into all these requests. The districts generally are pretty adept at getting funding from the state, but one thing that the state does not fund is the design fees. So when the treatment plant goes forward, and we're going to have to go forward because the state's going to mandate us to do it. The part that's not funded will be our design fee. So the design fee in round numbers is about ten percent of the construction cost, so in round numbers, say six hundred thousand. So if that would help modify that, that would be something that would help us get to an endpoint because that's our first step that we would have to fund. So if you have to update the sheets, I know we had two requests. One was for pipe and one is for PFAS. The pipe is secondary. The PFAS is going to be primary for us as well as for North Chelmsford. So you can look at that as a starting number. So as you consider that, that would be our primary need.
Is it design fees?
The design fees, yes.
Where does that fall in this, Paul? Forty-two?
Forty-two. Thank you.
So it's forty-two and forty-three together, right?
No, just forty-two. Forty-three is a separate issue, separate item.
Okay. So he's saying forty-two would drop to six hundred K?
Well, that's.
For the design fees?
Correct. He's hoping he can get reimbursed by the state for the rest of it.
Okay.
Do we have that similar situation on any of the other? No.
I have no idea.
Paul, is North Chelmsford on here or there, there's not?
We'd have to add them.
We just got it today.
We just added it a few minutes ago. I think we added it, right?
I have to add that.
Fifty, there is.
And that request was for how much? Five million?
Five point five two five.
Five and a half?
Yeah.
We don't know. Did they give you an itemized from?
No.
No, just the total.
Okay.
Instruction cost.
I would assume it's a similar, that they don't get reimbursed for design fees and hope they might be able to get reimbursed by the state.
Sure, it's the same, same.
So, um, Paul and Darlene, Darlene and John, I don't know if you want to just give kind of a general philosophy of like how you did sort of this first pass and then maybe we can just, I don't know any other way to do it other than to start go through line by line. Talk about, I don't know that we'll come to a hundred percent resolution tonight, but at least talk about priorities or any actions we want to take from here to look into anything further.
Well, you know, in constructing it, you know, the, the initial product numbers had to do with school HVAC issues. As you can see, our feeling was to recommend those. As, as the board knows, we've been in a two-year effort to maintain air quality in the public schools. As you know, those concerns exist today as, as students and teachers and educators and others return back to the classroom. Clearly, the concern is not only about COVID, but air quality and ventilation are, are present and will continue to arise in the future and therefore, the reason this is critical is not only in the short term, but in terms of the long-term viability of the school buildings. As we know, having met with the school committee and discussions with the superintendent, the cost the town will confront to construct new school facilities would dwarf anything and everything that we see on these sheets. And so the feeling is, is that the longer we can keep the schools viable for community use as educational facilities, it certainly works for the towns benefit both short term and long term. And so I think that sort of, you know, brings you through the first fifteen type of items, although as, as was noted, number three is, is, was addressed in the town's capital plan and the remainder of these, you know, would, would go towards addressing those needs. Once you move off of that, then becomes the HVAC concerns and other municipal buildings from sixteen to twenty-five. You know, the one that jumps out at us when, when we discuss this in preparation for tonight is the senior center HVAC system. And sort of the thought is, well, why is a building that's one, it's twenty-five years old, you know, need an HVAC system of 1.18 million dollars? It's our understanding that when the senior center was constructed initially in the community, it really was seen as a one-floor facility. And so now to go back and retrofit a building that we're fully utilizing on two levels, that's what produces that large scale of number. Is basically you're, you're not only addressing the upstairs hall and the rooms there, but you're also addressing the, the basement issue. And it's sort of the, the items that David described in speaking to the, on a much smaller level, the, the McKay Library, when you start now going into a multi-floor facility, particularly the size of the senior center. That's what's needed, but again, and our concern is it's indefinite futures of the senior center. And obviously we know we're housing at-risk populations there in both COVID and, and probably post-COVID in terms of flu and other airborne illnesses. You, you can see sort of that next item on eighteen, we, we sort of didn't have that sentiment of because we don't have that population. You don't have, you know, in the school case, unvaccinated young children or in the senior case, elders who are, who are compromised. In the case of the town office building, you know, we, to put 1.8 million dollars into a ventilation system for this building that we're in that's over a hundred years old, not to mention the disruption it would cost in terms of operation of the facility, which isn't even in this number, that, that was just the construction cost. We instead, you know, thought the more prudent approach, again, recognizing funding limitations and constraints would, would be go to immediately purchase the air purifiers, which you see on item eighteen on the list. And then the remainder were sort of the tweaks to the other municipal buildings. You can see that really, you know, are, are, you know, thirty thousand dollar range. And then obviously the center town hall, you know, it's a little more significant, but again, that's an older building, which is why that number approaches what you see for the, for the McKay Library and North Town Hall, obviously about half that size facility.
The line three, the one fifty-six for the water conductors, is that what was funded under the capital budget?
Yes. And so again, those were our sort of facility priorities. You know, it's not moving into human service needs.
What, what is the cost basis for the HVAC estimates?
Gary can speak to it or Melissa. Basically, they went and hired a professional engineering firm to go out and examine the facilities and then provide an estimate of what it would take to, you know, bring them into, you know, proper operational systems. I don't know, Melissa or Gary, if you want to amplify that. Melissa, I know you were part of that with Kathleen. Go ahead, Gary.
Gary Persicetti, yes. During that, Jess, who was our engineer, had gone through all the buildings. And when we were going through the schools, the first round, the most important thing in the first round was to get any piece of equipment that wasn't running properly or needed any kind of work done. And as part of that, we knew it was going to generate a list of some capital, which it did to finish up on the school side as well as the fact when we did the first round, we did not include the cafeterias and the auditoriums. So that got picked up as well and that was the final number to finish up what we would call the almost two-year assessment and repairs and fixing of the eight schools and a little work at the school admin building. Melissa, if you want to add, please do.
And I noticed Kathleen Canovian's on the call too. Kathleen, if you want to join in on the work you have saw for the other buildings. Hi, Kathleen.
Kathleen Canovian, Facility Manager. So your question specifically, Paul, was it the school department buildings or was it the general construction buildings?
I think, I think the chair's question was regarding the general construction buildings, how were those? You, you brought a firm in to over, examine the.
The FTA, mhm. We brought a consulting engineer, consulting engineering firm in to do a high-level assessment of every building. They pulled the original drawings. They looked at the equipment and they assessed the ventilation needs that the equipment one provides and then what the building needs. And then they just prioritized it. So, so basically the costs are based on how much work has to be done in every building to bring it up to today's ventilation standards.
Kathleen, I think we have a question here. George, did you?
I was just wondering, with all this work with the HVAC and all the various projects, I mean, is this, this is being looked at by more than one company in totality or is there, you have a, somebody advising you on what the cost may be and then you're going to set them up for bid or are you going to bid the whole, all, all the work is, is won or? I, I, I'm just curious, because there is a substantial amount of money involved here and we have, we're trying to save as much money as we can because we got so, we got so much money that's been requested and more than what we have able to give out. So I just wanted.
So George, the way I would answer that question is I would prioritize the buildings based on which, which building's going to help the greatest occupants, what's the biggest resource to the community, and then which building is, is lacking critical ventilation. And I think we prioritize it that way, which project we do first. And then, yes, they would have to go out to bid.
I think what, I think what George was asking was, well, I don't want to put words in your mouth. What I heard Kathleen is more the question of if these were all looked at individually, are there any cost efficiencies that could be gained by having someone look at the totality of the HVAC work that needs to be done?
I guess I would.
Can we, can we gain anything by that, especially if there's, I mean, taking, if I include a hundred fifty K for McKay instead of four seventeen or four eighteen, I think it's like 6.4 million dollars just in HVAC. So is there anything that we can do to bring that cost down if someone were to look at it in totality instead of as individual projects? Is that what you were asking, George?
George, we could certainly look at the projects and align them in a way that makes sense and then see how we could bid it cost-effectively, sure.
You could go the other way. First of all, the, as we know, the HVAC world is ridiculously busy right now. If you go and put out a bid of over six million dollars with DCAM and such requirements, you may reduce your bidding number of bidders as opposed to if you had some smaller projects, you're able to get, be, get people to come in and do some one-offs pretty quick. So it, it cuts both ways on something like that. And so it, you know, we'd have, we'd have to look at that carefully, but I, in the past, what we've done is we've generally done it by building. You know, if you, because the work is specific towards a particular building. But if, you know, if you, if you were to, if you were to bid it in its entirety or largely in its entirety, it could push out the time for, for the work to be completed as well as potentially increase the cost because you may not have many bidders in that market in today's time.
Were you saying something? You need a mic.
I was kind of agreeing with, with the town manager on that. Just on the bidding process, you know, you could do a DCAM.
You know, you could do a DCAM, you know, DCAM and do it as a one big project. And it may reduce your cost by doing that. The only problem is it's probably going to extend out your time getting, getting these done. But we just want to, you know, be very cautious on the whole bidding process in general and make sure procurement is done properly on all of these projects and how you want to do them.
So, just a question, though, in the total here in the general government HVAC, that 3.8, that would include 1.8 for the town offices, is that, so it'd really close it to 2 million if we don't include that?
Right.
Just wanted to know that.
Oh, are these subtotals for the total cost? I'm sorry, then I, I told it. You're right. So, you're really talking like 4.6 million in HVAC? You know what I'm saying? In that column that says recommended, if you total the recommended for all the HVAC, what are?
So, you're saying, take the total, but take out the?
Yeah, well, just for the recommended.
Just the recommended.
Instead of, because some of them have been moved out.
There probably is an easier way. I just, it was just a question I had. I mean, we're trying to save nickels and dimes here because we got a lot of people that are looking for money and we only have so much to give out. I'm just looking for ways to, you know, kind of, you know, save a few dollars. What if it's, sometimes by saving a few bucks, you spend more money. I don't know. Was it DCAM over 6 million and has to go out?
No, it, you start, it's less, it's less than that. You start hitting at different DCAM threshold levels. I think it starts at 1 million and then goes, goes in gradations after that.
I'd also argue that, you know, given the efforts the library have made to basically reduce their, their ask almost by, by two-thirds, that we put that 150 into the recommended column that they're asking for, for McKay rather than the deferred. I know they're anxious to get, get an answer on that, at least.
I'm still, I mean, philosophically, I'm okay doing that, but I'm still left with the question, is there another avenue that can be pursued with that because of the nature of the building?
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, two different things.
I don't know what, who takes that action to look at that, Paul, if we think it's something we want to look at.
In terms of?
Is there another avenue for funding McKay? I mean, we can't even fund everything that's in the deferred column right now. So, so on, on every single one of these, the question I'm asking myself is, is there a different way to fund it? Is there grant? Is there CPC? Is there some other way to do it? And that's why I was asking, is McKay a historic building or are there other avenues for doing that where that 150 could be applied to something else? I don't, I don't, I'm not arguing that it's not a priority. I'm just asking the question of, we only have so much money. So, for all of these things, I think we should be asking ourselves, what are the alternative ways we could fund these, if they are?
Yeah, I mean, clearly, the McKay could go to the Community Preservation Committee, as could the town hall structures, as we've seen in the past, since they're, you know, it's not maintenance, it's capital improvements to those facilities. The thing you got to bear in mind is why we've tended to go this way is, the ARPA monies are not tax dollars of Chelmsford. When you start using community preservation monies or the town's borrowing or tax levy, that's tax dollars of Chelmsford.
Okay.
And so, that's why we've tended to, you know, push these items into ARPA as opposed to going directly to CPC. But that is another funding source.
But isn't this money supposed to be used for fallout from COVID?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Right. And these buildings are difficult to be?
No, I agree. I'm talking about some of the other items. I just want to make sure, clear, this is fallout from COVID.
So, if we were to leave them in the recommended column but put a comment out there somewhere, it would be 20, 24, and 25 that are potentially?
Yeah, I don't see anything else.
For CPC?
CPC?
No.
No?
I think it's just those three items. I don't see any other structures that could qualify into CPC, Community Preservation Funding?
No, not, not under historical.
Okay.
So, just 20, 24, and 25?
Any other comments right now or questions on the HVAC portion?
Excuse me. Madam Chair, if you include the 150,000 from a K, the total for all of those recommended HVAC projects is 4,460,325.
All right. You want to, what section would you like to talk about next, Paul? You want to go through the, start at 26?
Yeah, if you want to pick up at 26 and, you know, looking at the senior center programs, when John, Dolly and I sat down, we saw that there was funding in the programs that we, that we recognized they took hits from the pandemic. But we basically saw that, we thought with the current balances in those revolving funds that those, you know, we put into the, you know, non-funded category, deferred category at this point in time.
Deferred or not funded?
It's deferred.
The first three.
The first three. The 26, 27, 28.
Well, I see that they're in deferred, but you said not funded.
Yeah, I mean, not immediately, not immediately funding, deferred category, that at this point in time, we thought the course of action would be to defer action. Because again, our notion was, was we weren't going to commit all of the ARPA funds that are expected to the town at this time. And so, it was something that we thought could be deferred to a later date when we see how and whether those programs resume.
And they're self-funded now?
They're revolving funds. Yeah, they rely on revenues from their operations.
So, these were like jumpstarts to the revolving funds because of the depletion during COVID?
Right. So, the, the notion being that if the funding was deferred, we weren't denying services to people. So, it wasn't as though, oh, we're not going to fund respite care, we're not going to fund social day or nutrition. It's that, looking at the fund balances, we, we thought that that actions could, those actions could be deferred at this time.
Okay.
Moving on to the senior transportation service, age-friendly, that's, that was in the recommended column. Just recognizing the hardships that so many across the community are experiencing in terms of services. And again, I'm not going to repeat what you heard at the last meeting. So, we had, we had maintained that in the funded column.
We cut, we did reduce.
We did reduce it. We wanted to fund one year and see how it got off the ground. It didn't get off the ground, rather than allocating a three-year commitment, sort of, again, let's fund it at this time for a trial year. And then, as we near the end of that trial year, then could have a means to evaluate whether to, you know, provide additional funding going forward or basically say, you know, we gave it a shot and it's not taking or, you know, doesn't show promise.
When do the grant cycles pick up for that again?
Yeah, I know. They've mentioned.
Is Jen Melanson's here, right? Oh, there's John.
There's John right there. John Bowles.
My recollection was that you guys were looking at grants, but there weren't any in the cycle right now.
That's true.
So, what is the timing of the grants?
Well, the, the, this, I'm John Bowles. I live at 19 Regina Drive in Chelmsford. The Massachusetts Department of Transportation advertises a statewide grant, usually around April. They submit the grant in the end of June, and then they start evaluating them. They award funds and the, you cannot expend the funds until the first of the following year, which would put it in 2000, January 2023. And they use it for a variety of things. Sometimes they buy equipment, sometimes they buy continuing program monies and so on. What I was referring to last week or two weeks ago was that the hospitals, the area hospitals have been granting other towns, not us, but other towns, a small amount of money, well, several thousand dollars, to defray some of the expenses. We know that, you know, Chelmsford residents go to both Leahy, Lowell General, and Emerson Hospital, the big three probably. And so, all of those would be tapped. And there is a national federal grant program as well. I'm not as familiar with the requirements of that, but they occasionally will fund things as well. So, they are FE, but I, I think we clearly could get the hospitals in the area to donate towards, towards our program. And I see Jen shaking her head. Why don't you go ahead and comment, Jen, from what your, your standpoint?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, John. Jen Melanson, Community Services Coordinator. So, as John stated, we're kind of like in, in a, in the middle of, or like in between grant cycles right now. The, the grant season typically opens up like in early spring. RFPs will, will come out like in, in March, right around there. And then, you know, towards the end of the fiscal year is, is usually when grant proposals will be due. And then, awards will be announced in the fall. And then, monies will be awarded come, you know, the following, January of the following years, is, is how most grant cycles operate, operate when we're talking about large-scale grants. So, certainly, you know, smaller scale, more local grants, like through the hospitals or through the Greater Little Health Alliance, or perhaps even through the Greater Little Community Foundation, someplace like that, you know, would be more of a revolving type thing where we could apply. It's an easier application process. It's a quicker decision. You get the money, you get access to the money quicker, but it's also much more small-scale. I happened to work on the Greater Little Health Alliance Grant Committee this past year, and, and nobody was awarded more than $10,000. So, you know, grants like that are not going to fully fund a program like this. This certainly would help supplement, but it would take a whole lot of, of those types of grants to be able to fund something like this. So, we would certainly be looking at going after, you know, Department of Transportation grants, both at the state and the federal level. And then, there's also the possibility of being able to potentially go after block grants, which are also, you know, much more large-scale. The issue with these, these grants is that the bigger the grant, the more involved the application process is. And, and also, the more lengthy the requirements are when it comes to, if you're awarded money with grant reporting and things like that. So, oftentimes, you actually need somebody. So, so I'll be, you know, full disclosure, given the nature of my position and the scope of the work that I do, there's no way that I personally alone could oversee a grant that large. Usually, what happens with, when you're getting a grant that's, you know, $100,000 or more, you're also hiring somebody essentially like a project manager that's coming in and managing that grant and taking care of everything that needs to happen with that grant. So, you know, we would certainly have to, have to look at how we would handle that. And that type of a position gets written into the grant. But, so that's just maybe a little more information than you needed about sort of, you know, the grant process and what we'd be looking to do.
So, with that 150,000, you'd be, you'd be hiring someone?
So, yes, we would actually be hiring two, two dispatchers because they would be covering more than 40 hours a week. And so, we would want to fund two part-time dispatchers. I did want to clarify, too, Madam Chairwoman, that at the, the previous meeting when we talked about this, I think there was a comment made that, or a question that was asked about, you know, is this the, the proposal that would provide help for Jen Melanson? I think the way is it was termed. And I just want to clarify that, that the, the two positions that would be hired are specific to this program only. So, they're not positions that would come into my department and, and help me with, in any way, with any other type of work that I do. These two positions would, would be specific to this program. And really, I would simply be overseeing, providing supervision for these positions. So, but we would be looking to hire two dispatchers, but we would actually write the job descriptions and change the name of the positions so that they encompass a little bit more than, than just transportation dispatch, because we want to make sure that these folks can also handle marketing needs. And then, depending on what type of grant monies we get, they hopefully would be able to, to do some, you know, grant data reporting and data collection and, and things of that nature. Because, you know, part of, of establishing a program like this is, there comes program evaluation that goes along with it, where we would be collecting data to make sure that the program is, is, is doing what it's supposed to be and meeting the needs of the people being served. So, that would come along with the, with the two positions as well.
A big problem would be maybe is with the transportation aspect of it, is you, is getting people who could provide the transportation. I mean, the LRTA just cut back on their routes and all that roads and, and there's many, you know, as with schools and things, you get the National Guide coming in and things like, I think, you know, I don't know how many drivers you'd need, but I would, I would assume that that would be a major concern as well, you know what I mean? But just, just a point, you know?
Yeah, yeah, sure. It's, it's definitely a point. I know that, that industry everywhere is stretched as far as, you know, hiring people and finding people to work. We do have sort of some preliminary, obviously, we're not, we're not super detailed in our planning as of yet, because, you know, we didn't want to put too much time and effort into really nailing down the details, you know, until we know if and when we may get some funding for this. But, you know, the, in the preliminary planning stage, we've, we've secured with the town manager that we would have access to vehicles, town vehicles that are already owned by the town that are being phased out in favor of electric vehicles. And so, there would be no purchasing of vehicles involved, and maintenance would be covered by our town maintenance folks. Obviously, they would need to be, you know, part of our budget would, would account for that. And then, we kind of are looking at, and John, you can step in here, too, at any time because you really have, have done a lot of the nitty-gritty and planning on this. But we would be looking to, I think, sort of use a hybrid model of paying drivers, but also utilizing volunteer drivers.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it would work because I know she's having trouble sometimes now with, with getting some of the drivers, you know, and it's too bad because, you know, these people need it desperately. And I think it's something that's really beneficial and would be, would be great. I just know that, I mean, the LRTA is a good place to work and people, they just don't want, they're just walking away and with a good benefit program and everything else. So, I know that's just one more, you know, problem, that's all.
Sure.
Thank you.
Paul, what I struggle with, with this is, like, we've talked about whether we should be using the funds to create positions, and that sounds like this is what we're doing.
But these aren't benefited.
How does that become sustainable?
But these aren't benefited positions. They would be, they're talking about two dispatches part-time.
Like contractors?
No, they'd be employees, but they, but they would not be, they'd not be enrolled in the retirement system or eligible for health insurance. I think that's the concern, in terms of OPEB.
And I guess the only other thing for, for me is, on all of these that are multi-year, I don't think we can assume that if it works the first year, that we can continue funding it through ARPA funds after that, because we just don't have, we don't have enough. I mean, the math doesn't work.
Sure. And, and, you know, we're, we realize that and, you know, we don't, this is not, the multi-year funding is not a make or break deal for us, you know? We realize that there, you have a lot of requests before you and have some big decisions to make and are going to have to, you know, whittle things down. And, and really, the intention of this program is to eventually become self-sustainable. So, this would not be, you know, something that we would be looking, you know, coming to, to come back year after year to ask for funding eventually through grants and through revenue that would be generated through the program. We would be looking to make this self-sustainable. But, you know, it's the initial startup, excuse me, that, that really is what would be necessary to get it off the ground. And it, and it's, you know, I know we presented John and, and. And it's, you know, I know we presented, John and, oh my gosh, Fred, sorry. John and Fred presented a lot of really compelling data at the last meeting. You know, this is, this is, would be an expansion of a service that's already being provided very successfully by the senior center, which would include all residents of the community, not just seniors, and would greatly expand hours and access for folks. So it's not really a, you know, from the ground up kind of thing. We're looking to expand on an existing program already, so there is a little bit of precedent there, although we would be doing things a little bit differently from what the senior center does. We would be working very closely with them. And also, they would have access to the software that we would be purchasing through this program, which is going to streamline things for the senior center as well, so.
So you guys have a plan of how you would fund it from year two and beyond?
Well, that's part of what we would be looking at and what we're looking at right now, as far as trying to even go after grant money as soon as the cycle opens in the spring. But as John, you know, mentioned, even if we were able to secure...
I understand the cycle hasn't opened. My question is, it's $150,000 a year to run it, so you get the jump start for the first year.
Mm-hmm.
Is there...
Yeah, I mean, I...
Let me finish. So when the proposals were made in December, the initial ask was the $150 for three years, right?
Right.
But if there's a jump start of $150 for the first year, do you have a plan in place that says this is where I'm going to get $150 for the... Granted, I know you don't know what grant awards are going to be or anything like that, but is there a plan in place that says between revenues and grant applications and hospital donations, I can get to $150, I think?
Yeah. So we would put a plan in place. So that's sort of what I meant by when I said that, you know, we don't have everything 100% detailed, because we just don't know how things are going to go and how it's going to happen. But if that was what was presented to us, then we would absolutely put a plan in place for that.
I wouldn't invest in the first year of your business without you having a plan that says how are you going to do years two, three, four, and five? So that's what, that's my question.
If that's what you need from us, then we can...
Do we have that that says we can become self-sustaining, an educated estimate, I guess is my question?
Sure, sure. Yeah, if that's what you need from us, we certainly can do that.
I feel the exact same way.
Can I just say, can I just finish, please? I just want to say that we were told that initial proposals that were to be sent to the board were to be very general.
I get it.
So that's exactly what we did.
No, you did exactly what was asked. I'm just kind of going the next layer now. That's all. Okay.
Yeah, I think just across the board, like on this one, I'd just be interested in how you would be able, or if you, where the funds might be coming from in order to sustain this year two and three. Otherwise, it doesn't make a lot of sense to give startup money if there doesn't seem to be a prospect, at least, of keeping this thing going. And, you know, I've seen that with a lot of the different projects that are here that need startup money.
Okay. Anything else on that one? Line 30, Paul?
Yeah, line 30 is submission I put to provide financial support for the food pantry. I think it's clearly evident that the demand on food pantries and social services are just through the ceiling. And again, I threw out a number of $1,000 a month for five years. It could be, it could be 2,000, it could be 500, whatever, but I think clearly, you know, to meet those who are addressing the impacts of the pandemic, as well as just normal costs of living in terms of utility costs and inflation and food and everything else, that, you know, we go out of this building every day. We don't see a shortage of people at the food pantry in the rear of the building. And I think you see the same thing in terms of the table of plenty, in terms of not only in their case, providing a meal and social, but just the effects of isolation, which is what they're also trying to address. So those are the next two requests.
Do you foresee that the commitment needs to be for the full five years at the outset, depending on what happens in the next five years, or...
It can be whatever you want it to be, but...
No, I'm just asking.
No, I mean, I think clearly that the demand is there. So it's, whatever the board's concerned with, I don't see it going away. You know, as you know, we're seeing impacts in the hotels in the community and elsewhere that are clearly evident of the widespread challenges in the community.
Any other questions? What?
No, I don't think so. It's got a ton of money, I don't think. The next two, 32 and 33, have to do with the health department. I don't think Sue's on the call yet. There's...
She's in the background.
Oh, she's here, okay. I guess, yeah.
My meeting, so you guys can handle it from here.
So I did present last month, Sue Rosa, Health Director, on my request. You did grant two of them last month, and I have three remaining, one being a public health associate, and I had originally put it in for the five years. I think everybody in this room is well aware of hurricane, tornado, whatever you want to call it right now, that we are in with COVID. The health department is drowning, and there is no end in sight at this point. We do not have the capacity to keep up with COVID. We don't have the capacity to keep up with our normal, everyday activities. We're behind in everything, restaurant inspections, every single thing that we are charged to do. And I am here before you today to ask that you approve my request for a full-time public health associate as an ARPA-funded position, full-time, for the next three to five years, because that's how long it's going to take, and a social worker, because the impact that this pandemic has had on this community is astronomical. We're not getting out of it in six months, we're not getting out of it in a year. I think you'll all agree that nobody ever thought we would be here coming up on two years later. I do understand your concern about not wanting to hire full-time people, but at this point, if this is grant-funded, and if we advertise that this is coming out of ARPA funds and that these are three- to five-year positions, I don't see, I request that you do not deny it. I look at the list of requests, and I am not trying to undermine any other department's request. But when I look at the request of some of the things that are on this list, ARPA funds are supposed to be for COVID recovery. And if health department, public health associate, and social worker for this community is not COVID recovery, I don't know what is. And I truly believe that you owe it to this community to fund this position, fund both of these positions, because it's the only way that we're going to get beyond this. You know, I presented in my proposal for a social worker that the mental health component through Interface, which is a service and a resource that we provide to the people of Chumsford, the calls are up 33% due to COVID. Some of the support systems that were in place in the community are no longer in place because of COVID. Businesses lost because of COVID, income lost because of COVID, food lost because of COVID. All of those securities that people have in their everyday lives are affecting the mental health of this community, every age population in this community. And then, like I said, basically, us trying to keep up with complaints, restaurant inspections, we can't do it. Our phone starts before we even get in. My phone rings seven days a week, all hours of the day, and it has been nonstop that way since COVID started. So I really don't know what else I can say. My other request on here is $4,000 to make sure that we have AEDs on every floor in this building. We have meetings that occur on every floor in this building, and right now, we have one AED in the gym, one AED on the first floor, and we do have signs that say, you know, in case of an emergency, this is where the AED is. But I just think that there should be one on each floor so that if there is, God forbid, ever an emergency, the AED is right there and people can grab it. I welcome any questions.
Can you explain the columns that you have here?
I think, yeah, I think on the social working one was...
You gotta get to a mic, darling.
I think when we were doing number 32, the social working one, we were funding, I think it said we were funding the one year, and then having, and this is before Chief Spiny took his out, because then we had another, like, mental health, we were thinking maybe like a cost share, a little bit, or share a person, is what we were kind of thinking on that.
That's line 32?
Yes. Because she was looking for a social worker, human services, and then they were...
And what happens after the 65K, then that would somehow get worked into the town budget, the general budget, if it was needed?
That's what, you know, we're looking at, probably be a cost, you know, would be a cost share probably between police department and the health department.
So I did have a conversation with Chief Spiny, and he came to me and told me that he was rescinding his full request in the hopes that the health department would get their request. We work very closely together, and we always have, just like we work very closely with Jen Melanson. I do pride myself that the health department is very interactive with all of the other departments in town. We work with the senior center, we work with the library, and all of those people play a role in helping the mental health of our community. I just don't feel that one year of a social worker is not going to get us out of this mess. And as it is, we do have Jen working, and Jen works her butt off, and she has done a tremendous job in the time that she's been here. And we collaborate several times a week on different things going on in town, and she can't do it all. So I just don't see a one-year, I mean, if one year is all your granting, then I'll take the one year, because it's better than nothing, but I don't see this turning around in a year. We're talking easily the three to five years to turn around the mental health impact of this, of this disease, this pandemic.
And Virginia, we haven't gone back. I mean, we, Chief Spiny just pulled his back. So the three of us haven't, like, regrouped and kind of talked about this since the beginning of December, so we're not saying, you know, so this is something we would look at, you know, we probably say now, funding that going forward, now that Jim has taken his back, you know, we just haven't really had a chance to really talk about it, but that's...
Yeah, if I could just add a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
So for like number 32, excuse me, number 33, the public health associate, when we admit, you know, we were being conscious of not trying to minimize positions, I will say that since I last, since, you know, the town manager, Darlene, and I met, you know, this is something we could come back to, because I really feel that this, you know, although I'm not a health expert by any chance, this COVID situation is exploding, especially since, you know, since the holiday season. Sue shared a statistic with me today that in November, I think they had about 400-something cases or reports, and that it's doubled in December.
467 in November, 925 in December, and we weren't even finished calculating the numbers in December.
And I will say, in Sue's defense, on New Year's Eve, actually, Sue wasn't celebrating, Sue was talking with me and others, because it hit home. We had an employee in my department that tested positive, and it had its severe impact on staffing. So just for the town offices, the town departments, the school department, et cetera, this may be something we have to look at.
It was one of the reasons why when John and I did our initialists, we left $2.5 million in unallocated funding, you know, because we didn't know what was going to happen in the years ahead, and we recognized that we had, until December 31st, 2024, the town had to commit those monies and had till 2026 to expend those monies. So that was why, when you say, well, why are we looking at just year one, is because we don't know. And as John said, if we saw a change in a month, goodness knows where we could be three months from now, or six months, or a year from now. And so that's why we didn't allocate all the funding. We just said, what's immediate, what's necessary to get us going, and then come back in six months, 12 months, or whenever, and...
But these would be fully bound to the positions?
Yeah, it's a full-time, the full-time position, it would be eligible for benefits and entered into the retirement system. The only thing I would say is that at the end of three, five, whatever year period, if the town chooses not to fund them, given the shortage of healthcare, mental health, and other clinicians in the area, I don't think, the only potential cost we could have if we were to eliminate the position would be unemployment, but given the demand in those industries, we're probably not likely to have a significant risk at unemployment costs. So, yeah, we would have costs for the current period, but if it wasn't sustainable three, five, whatever, years from now, it's not a liability, a significant liability for the town to eliminate the position in its operating budget.
So you picked up $114,000 from line 37, which is Chief's line. He's only asking for 27,000 times three, for three years.
Yes, $81,000.
So what you're saying is you guys want to go back and look at 32, 33, and 37?
Yeah, well, ultimately, we're providing feedback to you.
Is that, so 33, where you deferred the public health associate, that was because you were looking at combining it with 37? Or is that, was that some other rationale?
It was the idea that the mental health clinician was sort of looked at, both the health department and the police department.
But that's not the public health associate, right? That was, that's 32 and 37.
32 and 37.
32 and 37.
That's a social worker.
I feel like I'm the only one speaking here. Does anybody have any thoughts they want to offer?
I'm adding like crazy.
You're adding? And then the rationale on 33 was what?
It looks like they picked up quite a bit of money, you didn't, you know...
We just discussed 33.
We discussed 32 and 37.
Well, no, I mean, I think what Paul was saying was, we weren't saying not funding it, we were kind of just deferring it. It could be, you know, we have five years, it could be, you know, we could see, we were kind of seeing what, you know, maybe not, maybe not this year, or we don't, we were leaving like $2.5 million at the end of, that were, you know, deferred in case things came up, or things, and if this is something that really needed to be done, then we could then do that. But at this point, we were just saying, you know, we're deferring at this point, but...
But given what's...
No, it's kind of just in the last two months, almost two months since we looked at this, it's, things are really, really changing.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I'm just, so this really just needs to be rationalized with the Chief Spiny's change and, you know, the current numbers, because some of these columns look at annual costs and deferred, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, so give you some time to take a look at them.
And then philosophically, are you okay with adding headcount, benefited headcount?
Well, that's, are we taking a decision on that right now, or are we just trying to get this rationalized first?
We're just giving you our opinions on what we were seeing. I mean, this is ultimately your decisions on how you want to do this, but this is, these are, you're asking what our decision, when we were taking this, what was our rational decision at the time? It was a snapshot in time. Now we're, you know, we...
Things have changed.
Yeah, Sue came with some really, really high statistics today, where we were kind of, and then Chief Spiny, you know, kind of took his out to kind of help her. She said, oh, I think she really needs it more than I do, so we are kind of, this document's probably going to, is kind of a moving document. It may shift a little bit, you know, through the course of the...
Which was my thought, is give us some time to take a look at it.
You know, at this area.
And I do think too, that, you know, if you do approve these positions, when we advertise them, we advertise them as grant-funded, you know, three- to five-year positions. So it's right up front.
I'm not knocking that at all, Sue, but, you know, what's going to happen, in my guess, is you're going to find, you're going to still need them, and it's easier once they're in position to keep them than...
I agree, well, I agree, and I understand where you're coming from, but at the same time, if this position is funded, and then you have statistics that back this position, and you get the statistic behind how much more is being accomplished, and the fact that we, you know, get to the point where we are able to bring everything up... where we are able to bring everything up to code, because right now we're not, then, you know, down the road, whether it be three years or five years, if you have that supporting data, then that supporting data will help with your decision of, okay, do these positions stay or do they not, and do they become town-funded positions? And, you know, and then you have every right to ask for that documentation moving forward versus just automatically assuming that the position is going to, you know, roll over and no longer be funded by ARPA funds, but it becomes, you know, town, town-funded position.
I think the health of this community really is important, and I think we need to consider that.
Hundred percent.
Frankly, more than how, how many years and how many benefits are going to be consumed by this.
I agree.
And I'll tell you, right, and it's amazing to me that my staff is still standing from me right on down, because it's been a hell of a ride. And we're still, we're still in the midst of that hurricane with no end in sight right now.
So you guys want to go back and reconcile those?
Yeah, I mean, John can move them into any, that's where you want to move them back to those columns, and, and, I mean, that's, can do.
I'm looking for you guys to guide this because I.
I mean, I, I think, my, my thought when I was looking at this list was, I'd almost want to see the expenses or the, the requests listed by like direct COVID versus, you know, applicable one-time costs versus, like, you know, I look at PFABs and water, and that wasn't directly COVID-related at all. They were coming no matter what.
I, I agree.
But, but more importantly, like the health, like Sue's saying, I mean, that's directly COVID-related.
This is the most direct thing that's on the list.
Right.
Period, you know.
Thank you.
And it's growing the quickest, too.
So that's why I think we should probably move on this and reconcile it, you know, as we move along. At least think about it, you know.
Right. I mean, I think tonight we need to come out with something, and even if it says, you know, reconcile it at what it would be for two years, and then, six months from now, we can revisit it to see how many funds we have left, and if it can be extended beyond that.
Yep, I agree.
I mean, I definitely look at this list, and I think there's, you know, you look at all the HVAC things that would allow people to continue to use the services in town.
Which is also very important.
And control spread and do all of that. I mean, to me, that's very important. And then my only question is, is there a cost or not? And I totally understand your answer, Paul and Darlene, that, you know, you can, it's a double-edged sword, how you bet it out. With that answer, I'd be willing to make a decision on that, you know. Some of these other items, I pretty much could think I could, for now, take a pass on, but like Sue's request, I mean, I can't even imagine what your office is going to.
Thank you. I appreciate.
I think there's some things that we could just use a little bit more detail on and so forth.
We truly can defer.
Yeah, exactly. You know, to get more, more information. But this one, I think, we need to move on this.
Right.
And I, I agree with Sue. I mean, if there's a way we could put a big fat asterisk next to it that says, you know, when the pandemic's potentially, possibly, maybe someday, over in five years, that the position gets retracted, great, but.
Yeah, right. Well, I think that's part of the decision.
You can't have the restaurants not getting inspected, because.
Well, that's a big issue, you know, if they have a backlog, plus all this coming on top of them, it's going to take a while before they can catch up. And by the way, they're not going to be able to hire them tomorrow, even if we say okay tonight. So we've got to get this thing going to get the whole timeline started.
So what are we putting in what column?
I mean, I think in thirty-three, the annual cost in the far right is fifty-eight thousand.
Right.
You know, so I mean, you could put fifty-eight thousand for, just like you have the sixty-five in the column above it.
To start it for the first year.
Yeah.
Can I request that we go for at least two? There's no way I'm going to get caught up. I'm not going to get anybody.
If Chief Spiny retracted a hundred and fifty thousand of spending, I, I think.
Well, he didn't really attract the hun, yeah, a hundred and.
How much was Chief Spiny?
A hundred and fourteen.
He retracted a hundred and fourteen.
A hundred and fourteen. I mean, you could give her two, I mean.
Give her two years, that's a hundred and sixteen.
At least.
I mean, he did it with, if, if, I don't hear him on the line saying.
It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be a zero-sum game.
No, 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 but I mean, that was his, he gave up a request for a hundred and sixteen. I mean, you know, he's on, and I think he would chime in and say he didn't.
He is on.
Yeah, so I mean, I believe Sue is saying.
Well, I don't think we need to have a discussion with it.
No, I agree, I agree. But all I'm saying is I'm fine with the comment that he.
No, we're talking about funding it, and we're saying that we can't fund it for, she can't get anybody with a one year.
I agree.
So it's like, do we want to fund it? And if we do, then we need at least two.
Two to three. I'd ask for three.
Well, that's kind of more tending to go that way, too, but.
I'm, I'm asking that you fund both of them for three years.
I mean, I mean, that's, I mean, yeah, we, I mean, we should, we should probably throw the benefit costs. If we're going to be doing the hiring, I guess the benefit costs should be added into.
Yes.
That's what, that's what we're just, yeah.
Because that's another twenty-five?
Probably a little more.
Yeah.
Between.
Pension, self-insurance.
Pension and Medicare and.
Like thirty percent?
So what's that number, which we put in there?
Do you know that, or do you need to go look at it?
Well, I mean, if you're doing a reference, but yeah, I mean, you're looking at.
I mean, he's still wanting to be exact numbers, right?
Yeah, I mean, you're probably looking between Medicare and for employing. Yeah, you're probably, you're probably looking at thirty, thirty-two thousand dollars.
A year?
So you're looking at a hundred grand a year with benefits? So that one sixteen is really two hundred. Now, do you want to include benefits on your social worker?
We have to, it's full-time, right?
I mean, I think, yeah, if it's a full-time position.
So that becomes a hundred. And then take it out of the deferred column, I guess.
So the benefits wind up being paid out of the ARPA funds, too? Are you counting? Okay.
And again, this money will be drilled out over the next two or three years, so it's, you got your solution tonight, and if in a year, it looks like this is going to continue, and there's ARPA fund left, and we.
The quicker we get it done, the better it's going to be for everybody.
Mm-hmm.
What do we do at defibrillators? It's for Bryn.
I don't think how you cannot do that.
That's noise, yeah. That just needs to be done. That's a whole safety issue.
Well, we're not voting on these right now, are we? I mean, that's.
No. Well, do you want to vote on any of these tonight?
Well, I think we have to vote on some of these tonight. I mean, I don't see the point.
So we are, we could be voting on these tonight.
We could, we could be doing them, like.
Well, I think things like this should be looked at and voted on tonight.
Yes.
This is an immediate need. If we keep on pushing and kicking this down the road, we're never going to get anybody in, and they're just going to be overwhelmed.
I thought we were going through everything, and then you were going to come back.
Right, yeah. Yeah. You know, this other stuff that we know needs a little bit more thought, a little bit more information and so forth, but I don't think this one needs a hell of a lot.
What do you mean by this one? The.
These requests don't need much more explanation other than understanding the cause.
So guys, are we breaking to vote? Are we going to go through and then go back and vote on what we're putting in? I know that we agree that this goes in right now, and I don't have a problem voting on it, but.
Right. So you're saying let's just keep pushing through?
I'm asking, how do you procedurally want to do this?
Well, I think there are some that truly can be deferred, and we've identified some of those, and I think there are some that truly should be.
And there's, there's some that we haven't talked about yet.
There's some we haven't talked about.
That were presented tonight.
We got another fifteen or so to go through, so let's, do you want to get through those?
Sure.
That's fine.
Let's do that. Thank you. Thank you, Sue. You going to be here for a bit, Sue?
Yeah.
If not, I would like to take the shack out of the Moran's request out of order, because maybe she can answer some of the questions that we had.
Yeah.
Do you mind? Is that, is abort okay with that?
Yeah, that makes sense.
So Peter and Sarah Moran are here, Sue, and they presented the twenty-eight thousand dollars that they need for the grease trap.
Mm-hmm.
And then another eleven point two to renovate the building so that people don't have to come inside. And so the question, it was my question, like, why do they need, why is there an external grease trap for an ice cream machine?
So we have a regulation that states that any food establishment requires an external grease trap, and it is written in the regulation, and that has been something that we have enforced all along. If someone wants to appear before our board and ask for variance, they can, but it is written in the regulation for the, basically the protection of the town sewer system. So I did attend a meeting along with Mark regarding.
Mark from the Board of Health?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep, my inspector. Regarding this whole issue, when we discussed the whole rationale behind the, the grease trap, I understand where this request is coming from. However, I'm going to stand here, and I'm going to say that based on, you know, my understanding of what the ARPA funds are for, this doesn't fall into that category. I have read the proposal, I have read the letter. I do see, you know, a solid argument behind it. However, I think that you're going to open up an entire can of worms for all of the other individuals who potentially are looking into opening up food establishments that require grease traps. And if you issue funding to one business, how do you not go ahead and issue it to other people as well? That's my biggest concern.
And that rationale was tied more to Roberts Field and the money that we've put into that, and we can discuss that as a board, but I, my question was more trying to understand the rationale for the external grease trap, and whether there's, whether there's a process to go through with the Board of Health.
Anybody can, anybody can go before the board.
Is it just a no, no way?
So my decision stands as the health director. I am, I am a designated agent of the board. The board gives me the authority to make decisions. If we make decisions based on regulations, which is exactly what we do, and somebody does not like that decision, they have the opportunity to appeal before the board.
Okay.
Have there been any variances given for those types of situations that they're asking for, a grease trap?
We have one variance that is in place right now, and it actually is for tropical smoothie, and that ended up being a huge confusing mess when, when that was being, you know, designed and built and all that. They were informed that they needed an exterior grease trap. They did some surveying, they, they saw what was believed to be on the plans, an exterior grease trap, and then when they went to tie in at the very end of the project, it was not there. And it had been removed. However, we found out that there had never been a permit for anything to be removed. It was, it was just things, we didn't have records, let's put it that way, of, of any removal or when it was installed. So however long ago that happened, whether it was within a remodel, we don't know. And they came before the board because they were already at the very end of their project. And therefore, the board granted them a variance. They have to have it pumped every single month, and they submit their reports to us.
If nobody's allowed in the bill, if they have no customers inside, did you say that, or did somebody say that they don't need a grease, grease trap?
No, they still need a grease trap. It's based on your food.
Okay.
So the grease trap is based on your food.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with whether there are people inside the building or not inside.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
I misunderstood.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So just, can we do the discussion about that now, then?
Sure.
But.
So we're talking about the old Westwood Road one right now. I mean, I, I understand their, their situation, but I, I do agree with what, what Sue said. I don't see that it falls directly into the categories we have, especially given we have so many other requests.
Paul, could you explain your rationale for this?
Sure.
Because I think you articulated it better than anybody has so far.
One of the allowed purposes and specified purposes for the American Rescue Plan act monies is for economic recovery. And, and we've seen that along the way, whether it was, you know, the grants and from earlier efforts that were provided through Lisa Maroni and so forth. And so those, those programs exist and funding opportunities exist going forward, which is another basis why, at this point in time, we, we kept a reserve because we don't know what's going to arise in the months and weeks ahead. And in this case, as was noted earlier, the, I think what's unique about this property is the, the presence at Roberts Field. And given.
Which is why you suggested this.
Which is why we suggested it. Given, given the, the historic use of that site in the town's past, the period for which it was closed, and the fact that the current owners weren't able to survive the impact of the pandemic, it is an allowable, and perhaps you'll decide, a justifiable use for the, a portion of the town's ARPA money going forward, you know, to have that resource utilized. Because my understanding is, is if it isn't funded, that thirty, that cost of thirty thousand dollars is not going to be met by the next person who wants to provide a similar establishment. It's, it's a barrier to entry that, you know, in, in, in the case that this venture fails, that asset remains there. So if, if, if the proposed, you know, new owner decides, no, we're, after a year, you know, we're going to go do something else, that asset remains in the ground, and, and it would remain, you know, for, for potential next use of the property. So that's why I believe and understand that this, this would be an allowable use of ARPA, you know, in terms of.
This was a, this is the same thought concept that went into the grants that were given on one twenty-nine to attract restaurants, because when they come in and they build out these office buildings into a restaurant, if they ever do go under or leave, that asset's still there, that grant money isn't lost.
The facades and vinyl squares, well, were similar to this.
Exactly.
I guess.
I think there already is a precedent, I guess, is my.
Well, I, I guess my concern is it is one particular, you know, couple that's, that wants to purchase this, and like I said, I do understand that. But they, you know, Sue did also mention that they do have the option of appealing to the, to the elected Board of Health. I, I guess a question would be, if this does happen, is, is the value of that property going to increase? Is the real estate tax is going to increase on that property? That's one question. And then, you know, the other issue that they're asking for, they, they even said, you know, if we, if we were to sell it in a couple of years, it would already be upgraded to this, to this point. You know, it's, it's like we're paying for these upgrades, even if they may not still be there several years from now.
I think one of the things that you, one of the things that you said, Paul, that I guess the way I interpreted it is that it's such a significant barrier, if it can't get resolved, then we probably just have an empty building there in perpetuity.
Right. And which the assessment would likely be diminished because it's a vacant space and probably going to get into a deteriorated condition. I'm looking at John, he, he deals closer to the assessor than I do in, in collections and so forth. But, but basically, yeah, it's, it's likely to remain vacant or underutilized, which would then diminish the value of the property to go to past question about what would the tax impact be to the town? It'd be slight, but it would, you know, it would be slow.
Well, I think you're, it's a little bit, in my opinion, of a slippery slope, because then you, you have to look around town and say, okay, what other businesses closed during COVID that the next owner's going to step in and say, well, I'm going to buy this building, and they couldn't make it during COVID, so I'm coming in, and now I want money. But again, it's, the location is key because it's next to Friendship, and we put all that money into Friendship and, you know, really tried to make it a go-to attraction for the town, and I think this would complement that. So maybe we think about, maybe not all of it, or half of it, or some type of a match. I don't, I don't know.
Well, the other thing I wondered, too, is the plan, the, the three to five-year plan out from, if you were to get the money, is it sustainable? Do we have a sustainable business going in if this is put in place, or don't we? Because the last one wasn't sustainable.
We asked that from, from General Anson for the transportation, so I think at minimum, we would ask that.
No, I think that's, you know, I mean, that's what I'd like to just understand, how that would be sustainable.
Do you, do you want to comment to the question, or do you?
Well, I mean, are you looking for a business plan with numbers in it? I guess I don't, if you tell me what you're looking for, we can.
Well, we'd like to get a sense if we were to make an investment with this, with this funding, that it would be a sustainable business for you guys, and that it would be in place for a while.
Right, so we're taking a business that was in existence for a year before the pandemic, that was Right, so we're taking a business that was in existence for a year before the pandemic, that was succeeding. We're not, we're, we're taking their business model and continuing that, which was the coffee and pastry service. And then we're also enhancing it with the ice cream service. So yeah, we're quite confident that with the two pieces of the business, that it'll be successful for many years to come.
So it was, it was successful? Because I don't know whether it was bleeding then.
Yeah, no, from, from March, I got numbers from March 2019 to March 2020, right before the pandemic hit, and they were turning a profit and doing rather well. And we have plans to, you know, augment that business and I think make it a much better experience for, for the patrons. And now that the park has been renovated, there's going to be a lot more people there. I wouldn't be doing this on a wing and a prayer. We're investing quite a bit of, of our own money to, to make, make this happen.
Okay.
I, I think I'd also like to see you go to the Board of Health and, and do an appeal to see if you can get a variance. And if that, that gets turned down, then have us consider it.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I mean, we'd have to get with Philip and find out the process for that.
Do we, so, but, and I, I just, I don't want to get into the details. Out of respect to the applicant, are we saying that if that, are we supporting some portion of this contingent on a Board of Health appeal for the variance? You, you know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Because you, you, you send, the Board of Health says no, then they come back and you say no. We're kind of like doing the jerk dance here.
Yeah, I didn't think it was dependent on that. That's what I was saying no to. I wasn't saying we weren't supporting it. If that's what you, were you?
No, no, you looked like you were going to say something. I just wanted.
No, 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 I, I, no, I, I didn't know that it was contingent on it. I mean, it was good that they're gone. They're going to go and try to get an appeal, save the money for the variance.
My feeling is if the Board of Health, you know, gave him relief, then I'd still be willing to support part of the reconstruction project. If the Board of Health didn't give him relief, then, I don't know, I, I think we should, I would consider a portion of, maybe not the whole thing.
A portion, so there, there's 49.2K here basically.
Thirty. Did you say 49? Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, sorry. So what, what portion of are you suggesting?
Half. I mean, I'm a, I'm a match kind of guy. That's how I do things.
A 20K pending a Board of Health hearing?
Don't put it all on me though. I mean, there's four of the members that can speak up.
Yeah, I mean, the only, so I'm also concerned about precedent, but the only reason that I'm, that I feel more receptive to this one is because of the tie to Roberts Field and, and the viability of that building as a business to any small business owner. Who, who has to put in the grease trap, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a showstopper. So would I, would I, would I consider any proposal from any business in town because they had a hard time during COVID? No, but this, when Paul explained to me what his rationale was in terms of the context of Roberts Field and everything and, and that building simply not being viable for any small business owner unless its upgrade is made, that's what I think is the uniqueness on this one.
I mean, we're, a variance would basically kick the can down the road for expanding any offerings or next owners. When we met last time, it was portrayed a little differently. Didn't sound like there was any grounds for a variance. I heard different tonight. She's saying, yeah, you're welcome to come in front of her. So we can do that.
Probably be a good idea. Probably be a good shot. Well, not a good shot, I mean, a good, good chance. It should, it's a good move to go around.
I also don't know what, what their timeframe is either. I mean, you're already now in January. If they want to get out there for the spring, I don't know what it's going to, in terms of time for them to acquire the property, do the install, do the work, and then try to open the doors. Everything sooner is better than later in, in terms of that constraint.
Well, and next Board of Health meeting is in February, right?
Right. If, just a thought, if you were to get half of it, like Ken mentioned, regardless of whether you go for an appeal or not, would that be enough to get you off the ground?
It'd certainly be a step in the right direction. It would help. I mean, we're not.
I would prefer to see it done too. Because I, you know, let's get this over with. I mean, it probably should have been done before, but it wasn't. So I'd prefer to see it get done once and for all, and maybe if we can help them to get this thing started because of the money that we put into Roberts, the fact that we're trying to make an attraction there as the exception and the reason for it, and they can foot the rest of it, I think that would be a, a good solution.
Okay. I'm okay with that too.
So we, yeah, I'm fine with that. Do we make a decision tonight or are we marking this to revisit later? Or, well, let's, we'll continue through the rest.
They're on a timeline, but I'm just saying for this one right now, we want to put, is the majority of the board okay with? What do you want to put in the, in the recommended column? That's half.
Nineteen five, no, I'm just, twenty-seven.
I'm fine with twenty.
Any other thoughts from anybody else?
So.
Paul, Darlene, John.
So I have a question for, for Virginia. Are you planning like at the end is to, to vote everything in the funded?
Um, I think, I think that that's a discussion that we, we have to have. I mean, we have some high priority things. This one is time sensitive.
As many are.
The Board of Health we've identified is high priority. And I don't, some of these other ones, I don't think we've, we haven't touched them yet, so. The next one that's in the, in the funded column, Paul. Well, actually, can we, are we okay with going back to the list?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So. I think we're at thirty-eight then, that you guys deferred that. You recommending deferring that?
Yeah, it's, again, it's, it's something that we thought was worthwhile. We just didn't think it needed to be done.
Right now.
Immediately, right now, right. It could be done, again, not knowing the period of the pandemic, that it could be done at a later date.
Okay.
And then thirty-nine was deferred. Forty, as we discussed last time, I know, I know Steve Callahan and, uh, Brian Kramer, you know, on the call, but basically we talked about that could be funded by community preservation.
Well, is it community preservation or is it this earmark that you got?
Or the earmark, either, either one. I don't know what, you know, what.
So it's not that it's not funded, it's that there's, you're, we're planning to fund it in other means.
There are other funded sources, right.
But we're going to commit to 200K for Varney Park through some other funding is.
Right.
What we're saying.
Just not ARPA.
But we, right.
Not ARPA money.
Right, so we're saying, we didn't see with ARPA money that you could go.
I just want to capture that as a comment because otherwise it comes out, it looks like we're just not going to fund the Varney Park needs.
Yeah, maybe something.
And I think the discussion has been something different.
I'll put it up.
Yeah, out to the right, put something out there.
Thank you. So the premium pay.
Chief Spiny just texted me, wants to speak. I don't think we cast on it. Would you go ahead, Chief?
Thank you. I have a question with regards to the cardiovascular screening deferment. What, what type of timeframe deferment are we thinking of?
Again, we, we thought perhaps when it's clear that we've exited the pandemic to then do the baseline. You know, because again, if we did it now, we didn't know, well, should we then reevaluate people in six months, nine months, a year, whenever we're sort of cleared this hurdle? So that's, that's what we were thinking of.
All right, well, just, I, with all due respect, I would request sooner rather than later. We're talking about a preventative proactive assessment on, on potential heart disease for the active police officers, which, which I've learned that's the number one killer of active and retired officers. So I would just suggest that it just not be deferred a lengthy amount of time. This is all about getting these officers tested, screened, and if they need help, get the health and exercise they need to get to, to be in a better place. A healthy police involvement is good for the community for obvious reasons. So I just wanted to throw my opinion out there on that. Thank you.
Was that a 35K one time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, to, to what Chief is speaking to, I mean, I've heard firsthand, you know, and, and I'm not begrudging anybody, you know, the holidays hit and, and, you know, people are dropping off cookies, cakes, pizza and everything else.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think it's important. I mean, you see what goes on there. And people were generous, I agree, but, you know, it's tough. And I think, I think they need the help to make sure that they're helping. I agree with what Chief said.
Yeah, I do too. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't object to moving that into the, to the now category.
Any thoughts?
Over me. It's okay.
It's okay with you guys?
Yep.
Yep.
It's our vote.
Thank you.
So that takes us to premium pay, line forty-one?
Yeah, as you can see, we, we, we recommend deferral at this time. We, we did, again, it's not a vote in opposition to premium pay. But we didn't understand why it needed to be done now, especially if we're in the middle of the pandemic. So again, we could, six months from now, 12 months from now, whenever there's a period, and then we fully know the impacts, then that was our rationale of. And again, where the number came from is from across town departments. And we put in every request, as you know, and that was submitted in writing in the packet. So it's, you will have each individual request.
So when we, when we look at this the next time, can we just itemize what those were? Like by department?
Sure.
Because it's too, I, I, I think if we're going to, if, if we're going to do premium pay, one of the questions I hold is, is it an, is it an all or none? Okay, or is there some criteria applied to it? You know, in terms of the first six months of the pandemic, when there were no vaccines and, you know, people were out there not even knowing what they were exposed to or, and I'm just, I'm just kind of rambling out loud, but I think there's more thought, that there's a thought process that I feel needs to go into that and a ration, an understanding of the rationale of all the different piece parts that went into it. Because we had detailed presentations on some of it and we had no presentation except a roll-up on other parts. And I'd just like to see like how that 1.15 lays out.
Yeah.
It would, it would just be helpful.
And did the schools also get separate ARPA money? They called it something different?
Right.
They got the school opening grant.
They get, the schools receive money for, for, you know, which they, a lot of it mostly went into technology because of remote learning and so forth.
Was it in the same sort of ratio as what we got? Like, what did the school get?
No, they didn't get, they didn't receive ARPA funds. They did not receive ARPA funds. Those came to the community. They received answer funds.
They got answer funds.
How much did they get in answer?
I have to go back, but we were looking, it was maybe in total, they had like two, over the two, two years, it was probably a half a million dollars between the.
So yeah, not even.
And a lot of that, like I said, again, a lot of that went to technology that was for, you know, for remote learning.
Yeah.
Computers for the children, for the teachers, Zoom setups, things like that. It was a lot. I would say the majority of that went to.
Okay.
Um, they did have some like food service because they did the, the grabbing go lunches. They had, those were, those were through, like the CARES Act or through the COVID.
So, so it's the itemization. And then Paul, you had mentioned at one point, there's some kind of criteria associated with that.
I've cited the language, I've cited the language, yeah.
Relative to salary or whatever that we.
Basically, the, the end of the day, there, there is no salary, salary criteria. You just have to justify to the, to the US Treasury why, why you did it.
Because I thought you said before there was a salary requirement.
There, there is guidelines, but they're not restrictive guidelines. So that was they, they.
But it's a requirement. It's a guideline.
They're right.
And then I, and maybe it doesn't or doesn't matter, but then I think there's, for me, there's the similar community factor. I mean, I don't think comparing ourselves to a major city that's getting hundreds of thousands of dol, millions of dollars in ARPA funding is.
But we do have the go-to.
Is a fair comparison.
You know, we do have the go-to towns, which we always go to. What did, you know, Tingsborough, Tewksbury, Drake.
Well, we don't even have to follow them. I mean, quite frankly, you know, as far as premium pay, I would be very hesitant to, to.
I think all Virginia asked for though was similar.
But can I, can I finish?
Well, I wasn't done yet. When you started, go ahead.
Okay, well, you finish then, but go ahead.
All I was saying is that, you know, we use those, those five towns and all, it just gives us an idea of what everybody else is doing. I mean, we do have to remain competitive and so forth, but.
And I, I just, I, I, I'm, I'm hesitant to say this is deferred for six months to, two years from now because there's not much left in the, in the, after the funded. So I think we just either have to make a decision that we're going to do something or not do something or really defer it and risk that it's all gone. And I don't, I don't know where I come down on this right now, but I can't do it on the basis of 1.15 million. Right? I, I just, I want to kind of look at the roll-up.
For me, I can't do it until we really prioritize everything.
Right.
And we start to take a look at what the true costs are, if, if, you know, the finance folks are going to roll up some other numbers. You know, whatever we can do to further make it more efficient for the priorities and then start taking a look at what's left. I think we've got to look at that first.
Right, because the deferred.
And then we can consider that.
The deferred right now, without the tweaks we made on the paper copy, adds up to 3.6 million, but we only have 1.4 million available. So like not even everything in deferred is going to get funded.
Right.
So I, I just.
Can we give some criteria as far as what we want to see with premium pay? I mean, for me, I would like to see it by, by request. And also, you know, if you could put the police department wants whatever, can you tell us, you know, how many lieutenants, how many sergeants, how many patrolmen, the fire department, can you tell me how many? I, I, I don't know the, the ranks there, but, you know, per rank, just so we have an idea how many.
Yeah, is that what you asked for, Virginia? It was kind of a breakdown.
Well, you just don't want a broad one. I don't want police department, 68 people.
Well, I'll, I'll take the next step so I can at least see something underneath the 1.1.
Right.
I see nothing.
Well, all he's saying is as long as we're doing it, can we just?
Yeah, I just want more detail.
I just don't want to exercise everybody before we get to the prioritization and then, you know, turn around and say, oh, we have no money left. That's, that's all. I was trying to be sensitive about that. That's all.
Okay. The forty-two?
Forty-two, forty-two, you've, you've heard the, the treatment plant or the, and design costs, the water main replacement. We heard at the previous meeting. And then you go now, then into the town sewer operations. And again, most of these come from the required work in the town as well as the consent order. And as I said, the most notable being the line item forty-eight, the infiltration investigation we spoke of earlier this evening. You know, so those numbers are, you know, are basically, you know, multiples of that. You know, as you said, you noted earlier, the first year costs and, you know, roughly less than a half million dollars and then 1.5 million annually going forward. And why we put that in there and why we recommended it is those are costs that are going to be borne by ratepayers. And they're unavoidable. They're going to happen. And we spend a lot of time at this table concerned about the impact of the property tax. Well, the worst, a worse impact is on the sewer or, or water bills or what have you because not only do they pay them, they don't, they don't get to write those off. So you're, you know, you're going to, people are going to be impacted because those aren't sort of nice to have on the sewer. They're, they're, they're requirements to have.
So Paul, the eight hundred K that's in line forty-eight, so the 350 of it was the first year funded to do all the camera diagnostics, right?
Based on the understanding we had when this was assembled and.
And then, so what was, what was the balance of that?
Was, was, was the understanding at that time of what the completion of work could be done in that, in that first year.
Okay.
Now we have, you, you saw the revised from Weston and Sampson.
Well, I mean, clearly there's going to have to be some other way to fund some of that at least.
It's going to go from sewer rates.
There's not enough here.
Right, right, but it's going to, it's going to come from sewer rates otherwise. And, and that's why our feeling was is if the concern again is on the rate payer slash taxpayer, then that was, and that's what we see our peer communities doing. When I talk to my peers and Teworaker and Tewksbury and so forth, they're looking at devoting big parts of their money towards sewer project expansion.
Right.
So that's, that's the basis of the sewer items that are listed there.
That's one of the things I'm wondering too, is that we have columns here for funded, deferred and so forth. Is there any way, and if I'm making this too crazy, let's not go there, but is there any way where we could kind of categorize, like, you know, priorities one, two, you know, what are the things that we know we've got to do like right away, like we talked about with health and safety? Then two, things that are really important for the entire community or direct result of COVID? And then what are the things that are going to offset the overall cost for the entire town? You know, things like that, so we can kind of look at what those are. That's, that's what I'm, I'm kind of getting a picture in my mind, but it seems like you could do it easily here.
Right, and but the reason that sewer and stormwater were put in here was because the federal legislation specifically called that. Right, and but the reason that sewer and stormwater were put in here was because the federal legislation specifically called that out.
I understand.
That's how we did it.
I would just look at that, you know, I, again, I'm talking about priorities because when you start to re-categorize everything, you can kind of get a sum up of what's going on here, you know, to know where do we start and stop, you know?
Like add a column, even if it's just high, medium, low or something.
Yeah, you know, anything, I just.
Right, because what's going to happen is if, if, for example, the pump station upgrade at Kensington Road, if that's not funded under ARPA, it's going to go on the warranted town meeting to be funded from the sewer debt.
Well, I, I.
Yeah, so it's a, it's an immediate priority.
And those are things that would benefit everyone.
Right.
And those are the kinds of things that we should be considering with this.
Like to capture the priority and the rationale?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're not reinventing anything.
Right, because that's where, I don't want to get lost where we can, you know, the, the big priorities that we can really take a look at, see what that cost is before we start to go into the, you know, next, next level. And I'm not saying the lower, they're just not as high as the, you know, the ones that will really impact the town in a positive way from health, safety or overall cost.
And then close out the 49 through 53 where the stormwater items, and then 54 and 55 were the telemedia ones that Pete Padula spoke of the last time.
So the 49 through 53, are those, they would go back to the?
Stormwater enterprise fund, which is, which is the surcharge on the sewer bills.
Let me finish the chat. So, so it would either go, the, if they're not funded here, it's not a debt service item. It just gets reflected back to the users.
Well, it's debt service, but funded by the.
To the project, to the stormwater, which you pay in your rates.
Your sewer rates, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so with that.
And the, the only other item, and I was surprised Suda didn't raise it or someone didn't raise it or skates, was, was the whole issue of the COVID testing. You know, that, as you saw over the weekend, that the governor announced that.
I just don't even think that's within reach.
Yeah, it's within ARPA. It's within ARPA, which I forwarded to you that, you know, the, the towns are now combined of the state contract for 10 plus dollars apiece, COVID testing, at-home testing for town residents. But the question becomes, how often do you do that? And then how do we distribute it? That was the other question is, is, that would be another considerable, but it, and it's out there and I know people are talking about it because.
How did we miss out on all those free kits?
Because they did it by community.
Yeah, well, I looked at the community list and it didn't make a heck of a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, we didn't make the list of 102, but Weston did.
Weston did, yeah, exactly.
Okay, guys, so what are, what are you, let's identify the line items that you want to vote on tonight to get going.
Okay.
And I think Paul, just the other one is the action that we have on the CCA because that's not sustainable under the ARPA funding. Just, I mean, we don't have to talk about the details, but I don't want to forget about it because it's not on this list. We can't keep throwing ARPA funding at that, so.
Well, I think the, the things that we talked about on one through 25 on the HVAC, I think all those are, are important. You know, not excluding the ones obviously that we have, that have been removed. I, I think maybe there may need to be some investigation as to how the best way to, to, um, to bid those out would be if, if it makes more sense to go as one or, or as smaller projects. That, I think that would be the biggest discussion, but I don't think that's something we need to decide. I think that's John and Darlene and Paul to determine that. But I, I think, you know, you know, obviously absent number three and number 17. And then, I don't know if you wanted to hold back.
Can you, before you leave, are you, are you leaving HVAC or are you going somewhere else?
No, I'm just going one through 25 for now.
Okay, go ahead.
So, so yeah, removing number three and number, number 18. And then if you wanted to hold back number 22, 24 and 25 to see if those can be funded through CPC, but.
You removed number 18?
She meant 17.
Oh, yeah, I meant 17, yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, but that was never in the total anyway.
Yeah.
And what are the numbers, Pat? You said 22?
20, 24 and 25.
Those were the ones where I brought up.
Yeah, okay. I thought she said 22, but it's 24, 25.
No, 24, 25.
Financially speaking, okay, if there's other ways of funding 20, 24, 25. What do you, Darlene, John, I mean, what do you guys think? Is it? I, I'm just looking at, there's potentially, you know, almost 300, 375 that could be applied to something else.
I mean, they could.
Unless you don't think it, it's.
They would have to be brought before the preservation.
Yeah, they would have to be brought to CPC.
And then go to town meeting.
And then it would have to be a vote at town meeting, yeah.
But are you looking at voting on the HVAC tonight?
I think we should.
But you just said that they have to go back and check out how to bid it.
Well, that doesn't mean that we can't vote to go forward with it.
What I would suggest, because again.
We could vote next week too on some of this, if we, if we want you guys to go back and iterate.
What I would suggest is that you, you list the items and vote a lump sum because we know through experience with change orders and other things that are going to proceed, some things are going to come in a little higher, some are going to come in a bit lower. And rather than sort of being tied to, you know, number six, number seven, and that we basically have the list of items and aggregate amount. And then, you know, we'll report periodically and where we are in terms of bidding and bid results and construction as it moves along.
No, that's fine with me.
I think that's the way to do it.
I just would like to know is, from the financial perspective, do you see anything material that's going to change? With anything you might go back to look at here? So pretty much it is what it is, with the exception of what we've taken out, McKay's change, et cetera, et cetera. So, okay.
The Board of Health's a big thing, John.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's next. So, I mean, I haven't been.
What is your thought, Ken? Were you?
I'm fine with that, no, I, I'm fine.
So what does that, what does that come to? I haven't been.
4.4 million.
Okay, that's less than we thought it was going to be at first.
Yeah, 4.4.
Four million, 416,000, 325.
For one through 25.
For one through 20, yeah, and actually I have to take out the ones if you don't want, the ones that Pat discussed, the possible CPC ones. If you want them taken out.
Yeah, I mean, that.
I'm looking for opinions from other people.
I would, because that'll drop it back below 3.9, 3.8.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, but that's a question too. I mean, those also could be timely, although town meeting is just in what, three and a half months? So that would be, when CPC would be, when, when, if, earliest they could be funded from CPC. Is that right?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think those have to be voted on tonight.
Okay.
We're in the middle of a pandemic, so I'd rather just get the important stuff going. I mean, if it came down to it and you couldn't use the library, the old center town hall and the north town hall while they're, so be it. I mean, we are in the middle of a pandemic.
Right, and, and not all of them are going to get done all at once anyway. We know that for a fact.
There's a portion of the money I think you re, voted on tonight, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could, you could round numbers.
You could defer those three projects, if this is what I'm pointing, I would just kind of defer the three projects.
About four million.
Four million, deferral.
It's not saying you're not going to do them, you're just saying.
Defer them?
Just defer them.
Until we can vet it?
Until we can find out CPC is going to fund it. And then, and then if they, if they agree, if they vote not to, then we can come back and reconsider. I mean, we don't have to fund all this money tonight. In fact, we shouldn't fund all this money.
No, no, we shouldn't.
Even, even, even next month.
Well, that's why I think Ken asked.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I mean the whole 10 million, I don't mean.
No, I, I just thought like the important, to me, the, the two important things to walk out here tonight before it's, you know, 11 o'clock is the Department of Health and the, and what we're doing with the little shack shop there. But, I mean, those were the two that I thought we could at least nail down tonight, unless you want to go do all the HVAC tonight.
Well, I think we should do the HVAC tonight. I mean, I think the numbers are, according to Darlene, as close as we're going to get for right now. I mean, if, you know, we could, we could fine tune the numbers for months.
It's fine, I made this, as these three.
Well, we could also, I mean, just a thought, I mean, we could do the Board of Health stuff, the shack, that's not a big issue. And then with the, on the 10th, come back to just focus on the HVAC and just go through that section as the next priority.
What more would you want us to have for next Monday?
Uh, I guess maybe just to take a look at it and find out if there are anything here that are more time-sensitive than others. I, I don't know.
I mean, I would think that that would be the, the discussion of, you know, somebody, you know.
There's other things that I think we're going to have to look at next week anyway that are in this funded column that we're not addressing tonight.
No, but I.
No, I get it, but you know, this, we've got a lot of time.
I just don't want to come back next Monday night and you're still looking for information next Monday night that we don't have. That's what I'm saying, what more do you want for us to bring you? I don't know how to answer the question about, is it, you know, what's more time-sensitive in terms of, you know, the, somebody in the town offices versus somebody in the DPW building? I don't know how to answer that question. I think the schools obviously are most sensitive and then senior center is most sensitive. And those will be the ones that we're going to bid and design and go out first. But the others will be right behind, although I can tell you, we're going to do the air purifiers for this building as soon as possible.
Number 18 needs to be done now.
Number 18, I mean, you know, so that, that's how we would proceed.
Okay.
But I, but I don't know what more information to bring you a week from now.
No, that's fine. I'm fine with that.
Okay. So what is the number that, that we're at tonight for the HVAC?
If you take out those three possible CPC projects, I'm coming out with 4 million, 46,000, 975. And that's for school and general government.
I thought we were at 4.416.
That's if you add, if you don't take out, 4.4 is if you keep all the projects in like McKay.
I'm sorry, what's the number?
And the old, and the old town hall in the center and the north community center.
Okay, 150.
4 million, 46,000, 975, is what he said, right?
4 million.
So, so John, that 4 million.
I can put these back in, I didn't.
Thank you.
Well, that's why, you have McKay at 150, I'm sorry.
No, you can take them, you're taking, you're putting them in deferred, right?
If you, if, if that's what the board wants, I can.
I think that's, that's what you just said, right, Pat?
Yes.
So what is that number?
4 million, 46,000, 975.
And John, that's an at-sum of what, 1 through 25 on the?
Projects, 1 through 25, the only exceptions are number three, which is funded through capital. And then number 17, which is the town offices ventilation of 1.8 million, that's out. And.
Yeah, and the other three smalls.
20, 24, 25, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to understand the formula you're using over there, okay? So do you want a motion to approve 4, 4 million, 46,000 for those projects?
Yeah, we'll get started.
I was like, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get started, no, because the quicker we get the green light, the quicker we'll get going, particularly in the schools and senior center.
The other thing too is you've got to get in line.
Yeah, exactly.
You're going to be getting in line with everybody else, we better do it sooner than later.
Right, and one week could be more than that, it could be exponentially.
But it might go down with bidding or whatever.
Well, you find out.
So up two, so we can approve it up to 4 million.
It might go up too.
All right.
Well, then they'll come back.
Well.
Well, then we'll hold them to these numbers.
Let's, let's have a motion.
All right, so John, can you scroll back down a little bit?
Sure.
4 million, 46,000.
All right, so I will make a motion to grant the spending of 4 million, 46,000, 975 dollars for the HVAC improvements to the various town buildings.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0.
Just to make it clear, I just want to mention, all, all the ones that the board approved, I shaded in yellow just so there's no mistakes.
Will we get a copy of that?
Yeah, I think we're going to be looking at this next week.
And then, I mean, I don't know how much longer you want this meeting to go on, but I'll make another motion if you, if you want to roll through what we already discussed.
Yeah.
Unless you want to cover it before we make a motion.
So where, where, can you just tell me where we are right now, John, in the, the funded and the deferred?
Oh, at the very, at the grand total at the bottom?
Yeah. The recommended and the deferred?
The recommended is right now 7 million, 800,000, 975. And the deferred is 3 million, 256,000, 350.
And we now approved 4 million of that 7?
Yes, yep, that's right.
She did.
Everything in yellow is.
But what is available? We don't have 2 million available.
You have like 1 million, in the little box at the bottom, 1 million, 608,000, 316.
Until May. Right?
Yes. But that's assuming everything else is approved in that column.
We don't even know if we can spend the money for now.
Well, 375 of it is going to be spent on HVAC if CPC doesn't fund those. So we're really at like 1.2 million, we've dropped our available funds. All right, you want to approve the health, the health, Board of Health ones?
Yeah, what number though? John, what do you have there?
They're around 32 and 33 in that area.
Oh, you mean what number, dollars?
No, no, dollar amount, so you're looking at 300,000, right?
100 and 200.
So if I make a motion to approve 300,000 for a two-year social worker position and a two-year public health associate position for the Board of Health?
Say that again?
Well, we, it was.
No, it was one year for the social worker, the 100,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. So I'll make a motion to approve 100,000 for a one-year social worker position for the Board of Health and a, and 200,000 for two years of a public health associate position for the Board of Health.
Okay, I thought she requested at least two.
She did request more, but we said we could fund this now.
I thought she needed two of them. Two years for both.
She did, but, but John already, he has a type, that's.
That's not what we, right, that's what she wanted, but that's what we typed during the discussion.
Well, I think, I think.
That was added with benefits up to that.
Right, so it was one year and a two year.
She asked for three years and we said, all right, we'll give you.
She was asking for headcount.
And then in the original.
We're giving her two people.
In the original recommendation from Darlene and John and Paul too, the social worker was at the one year, so we left that. Unless you guys think we should bump it up.
I mean, I, I think we talked about it's going to be hard to hire somebody that they're very likely to leave to be, not have a job in a year. I think, I think that she was very adamant.
She said two years.
That two would be a minimum. I mean, Mark even said he'd go for three. I thought I heard him say that.
I'm okay with two.
I am too.
Because one's not going to, you're not going to attract much, that's all.
Okay, I mean, I just went, was typed up there, so if you want, Virginia, what are your thoughts?
It's the most directly relatable to this other than HVAC.
Man, personally, I think we're going to need it because from what I'm reading, most pandemics take five years to run their course. And we're two years in, so.
Well, and, and two, you're going to need, you know, especially with the backlog and everything else that they have, I think.
Okay.
I mean, and I know I said at the last meeting, I wasn't a fan of hiring somebody, but also with the, the numbers we're starting to see and what I'm reading from the World Health Organization, it's not going to get better soon.
So you want, you want John to change line 32 to 200?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that's what.
You guys, John, Darlene and Paul, you okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, so I will change my motion. Here we go again. All right, so I will change my motion. Here we go again. So I will make a motion to approve two hundred thousand for a two-year position for the human, uh, social worker and a two hundred thousand for a two-year position for a public health associate for the Board of Health.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero. And then you want to take care of the shack?
Wait, how about the, the defibrillators and the cardio metabolic screening?
Four thousand for the defibrillators.
I was gonna go back to that just because.
Oh, okay.
Ken had said shack.
Well, we can do them in order if you want.
It's okay.
Keep rolling.
All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve four thousand for the defibrillators in town hall and thirty-five thousand for the cardio bi, uh, cardio metabolic screening for the police officers.
I'll second that.
And what about the, the twenty-seven thousand for three years that he asked for for the, what's it called?
Yeah, the collaboration.
Eighty-one thousand.
Mental health commission?
The frontline initiative.
Frontline, actually, the eighty thousand.
That's line thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
It became the frontline initiative at twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven.
What was the total you were looking for?
But it was eighty-one for three.
Eighty-one thousand for three years.
Eighty-one, twenty-seven times three.
Yep.
Did you change that one, John?
Yeah, I just added the eighty-one thousand on.
And that's times three?
Yes.
No, I, twenty-seven.
No, it was twenty-seven times three.
So it's eighty-one is the new number. All right, here we go again. I will make a motion that we approve four thousand for automated external defibrillators in town hall, thirty-five thousand for a cardio metabolic screening for the police officers, and eighty-one thousand for a mental health clinician?
For the frontline.
Oh, for the frontline?
Frontline initiative.
Initiative for the police department?
Yeah, so.
It's called the frontline initiative?
Yeah.
Did you second that, Mark?
What's that? Yes.
No, you didn't.
I second that.
Oh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
And then, uh, let me think about how to word this. I'll make a motion to approve.
Twenty thousand?
Twenty K?
Twenty K for the renovation of the Shack Building on Greenwich Hill Road?
Old Westford.
Old Westford?
Bring it to Columbia.
If denied.
Two seventy-two Old Westford Road.
Go ahead.
I don't think it has to do with being denied or not. We'll, we'll give them twenty thousand towards it if they start up.
Oh, it doesn't matter if they get it.
That's, that's where I was trying to go with this regardless, because I think we want to get it done. We want to get the grease trap put in. We want to just get this over with so that we, we have an asset there going forward. So what I proposed is we gave you twenty thousand towards your cost of forty, will that get it done? And he seemed to be amenable to that. That's what I was trying to broker.
You okay with that?
No, I'm gonna vote no anyway, so don't, you know, don't ask me. I mean, if, if you want to know my opinion, he even said, well, it might be more than that. A couple of times he said that, it might be more than that. I mean, I would hope he wouldn't come back for more if you do the twenty thousand, but.
Well, they asked for twenty, they asked for forty, and so we said no to that already.
Right.
So I don't think they'll come back.
It was a little more than that because it was twenty was not half.
Twenty is half of what they're asking for.
Little bit more than that. It was quite half.
He was looking for twenty-eight.
Yeah, I think it was forty-something, like five.
Well, it was twenty-eight for the grease trap and twelve for updates.
For twelve for updates.
The grease trap's twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight for the grease trap.
I mean, I don't want to pay for updates to a building that.
Right, I want to pay for the grease trap, twenty towards the, you know, getting that done. That's what I think we, just my suggestion.
To, that the motion say towards the grease trap?
Yeah.
So that it's an investment in the building next to the town property that we've invested so much in?
Right.
So if, if, if they appeal to the Board of Health and the Board of Health grants their appeal, then what, you rescind it?
They don't need it.
Well.
They don't need it. It's for the grease trap, so if they, if they go and ask for it, then they don't need it.